With that then, I will call to order the June 24th, 2021 meeting of the Louisville Planning Commission with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Heffner.
Here.
Commissioner Deal.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Chair Bronis.
Here. Thank you very much. And a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
Motion to approve?
Thank you, Commissioner Deal.
Second.
Second Commissioner Heffner, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes. At this point, we'd open it up for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. I believe that's a raise your hand if you're on video or star nine if you're on a telephone and wish to speak to something that's not on this evening's agenda.
And I see no hands raised.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Then we will move into our first item of continued business.
Chair Bronis, do we need to read the standard video online meeting protocol? Are we good without that?
No, I'm going to do that now. So I will now open the public hearing on a request for approval of a PUD and SRU for 950 Spruce and Platte. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from planning commission to staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting by computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function if participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. The purpose of public comment is to receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. Planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. And then we'll check on proper notification.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Bronis, members of the commission. I'm going to share my screen just to get the PowerPoint set up and I will address the public notice certification. So hopefully you can all see my screen here. The, this was published originally in the May 2nd edition of the Daily Camera and posted April 30th by April 30th. So this was originally for our original hearing date of May 20th, which was then continued to June 10th and now continued to this evening. So the, we have met all public notice requirements.
Thank you. Do any planning commission members have any disclosures? Seeing none, I would ask for the staff presentation, please.
Okay. Good evening, Rob Zucaro with the planning staff here at the city. I'll be presenting this application on behalf of the planning staff. So this, this is a proposal for an SRU, a special review use for residential use, but also a planned unit development for the site development, and then a final plat to consolidate lots. So this property is at the southwest corner of Spruce and Front Street. It is, it's known as the Fisher Building property. It's also the former site of our library before we moved across the street. So I'll get into the details, but there are three parts to this application that I will go into in more detail. So again, originally this property was developed in 1984 as the Fisher Building. It was about an 11,000, 12,000 square foot development, it looked like. It was converted to the city library around 1989 where it was a mix of uses and eventually converted fully to the library before we built our new facility across the street in 2006 where it converted back to a commercial building and it was remodeled and expanded to about a 14,000 square foot building. So as you can see here, this is the building, it faces Spruce Street, and then behind the building, there's a parking lot that serves the development. This is the alley at the, to the west, and then you can see part of the building and part of the parking lot fronts, Front Street on this side. So a quick summary of the proposal. So again, just to orient you, here's Front Street, here's Spruce, here's the alley, here's the parking area. They're proposing to take the existing Fisher Building and convert the second floor to allow three to five residential units. So the reason it's three to five is that they're proposing that perhaps the whole second floor could be five residential units, or it could be three units and then maintain office space on the second floor. So there would be some flexibility as they propose it if it's approved. To support that development, the building would be modified on the rear to add some decks and storage units. Some of the windows would be modified throughout the building so they'd be operable for the residential units as well, but the, the design of the existing building would stay largely the same, other than those additions on the rear of the building. They are proposing to allow three row homes, that front, Front Street. So again, the front of the bill, they would, the front of those residences would front Front Street, and then all of the development would be accessed from the alley. Right now, there's a curb cut right here that allows you into the parking lot. So this would change the access to the site so that it's fully accessed from the alley. They would be providing 25 off-street parking spaces. So that would include surface spaces in the lot, as well as each of the row homes would have two garage spaces each. So that doesn't quite meet their requirement for downtown parking. They would be short between one and two spaces. So that, what, the reason it's between one and two is depending on how they utilize the second floor. If they do have the office space up there, they would have an additional space need. So as you, as you probably know, and I can go into more detail, within downtown, you are allowed to pay a fee in lieu for your parking spaces. So they're proposing to pay a fee in lieu for the remaining required spaces for the development. So here, here I'm just going to zoom in to show you a little bit of the proposed site development. Again, the driveway cut would be closed here. They'd extend the brick banding, add street trees to kind of complete that streetscape on Front Street. There's some new landscaping proposed on the south with the reconfiguration of the parking. There'd be compact spaces here, so they'd be, you know, more narrow and shorter than our standard space, but typical for a compact space. They would be redoing the trash enclosure to include space for compost and recycling to help support the residential use especially. So here are the elevations that are included in the PUD. So this is basically looking from Front Street. So this is the existing Fisher Building. You can see some of the additions off the back with the deck and the storage units. So these would be the new residential units that are proposed, the, the row homes. And so basically, the, the ground floor would be a primarily a brick material, but also include gray panel material. If you look at the side view here, you can see kind of the predominance of the brick, at least on three of the sides. And then it would transition back to a third story that would be stucco on the top. It's a gray stucco. So there would be some outdoor patio and deck spaces on the front as well of those residential units. On the rear, so this would be looking from the alley, kind of in the bottom right here. So you can see the garages, as well as some small deck spaces off of the, the top floor there. There is one waiver request for this. It is to allow signs on those three row home residential units. So we do have, we do allow live work units in, in downtown as a use that, that's allowed within that zone district in downtown. And they're not proposing that these would be live work units. Those have a different requirement for parking. They have minimum amount of square footage that would be, have to be dedicated to a, the work portion of that live work unit. And so they're not proposing to meet that. This would be more of an incidental home occupation, which we allow in all residential areas of the city, but because this is the commercial core of downtown, if there was a, going to be that home occupation, they wanted the option of allowing a sign, which isn't allowed in our home occupation code. So as you can imagine, in the more suburban neighborhoods, if people have home offices, we wouldn't really want signs, but in this area, they are requesting the allowance considering that it's a different character area. So a little bit into the staff analysis, so there's much more detail in the staff report. We really went kind of policy by policy, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but I'm going to give more of a high level overview. But this is a list of everything that staff reviewed. So all development within downtown, we're looking at the, the design handbook for downtown. We're looking at the downtown framework plan. And of course, since this is a PUD, we have all of our PUD criteria. So the residential uses, both the, the repurposing of the second floor of the Fisher Building, as well as the three new row homes, those are only allowed through special review use in downtown. So those residential uses are reviewed through that SRU criteria. And then the property is currently two lots, so the proposal is to consolidate the lots. So we, there are, there is some, there are some code requirements for plats that we also analyzed in the staff report. So the majority of our analysis, I would say, really focused on the design handbook for downtown. Here's, here's our map, and the design handbook really breaks downtown into two areas. You can see the crosshatch area outside of the blue, and that's the transition area. And that's really meant to be more residential in character, lower in scale, and really kind of blend with the surrounding residential areas. The area outlined in blue and highlighted in blue is the core area of downtown, and it's really meant to be the commercial core. You know, the, the transition area is really restricted to two-story development, 35 feet in height, where the core area, you can have three-story development up to 45 feet in height. There's lots of caveats to that three stories that I'll, I'll go a little bit into, and there's a lot of discussion in our ordinances about that as well. So here's the location of this development. It's kind of right in the, the middle of that core area of downtown. So just a summary of the design handbook policies, as staff presented our, our analysis, is a lot of the handbook policies talk about creating pedestrian scale, improving the pedestrian environment, having buildings that complement the historic elements of downtown. So there's, that's done with the size of the building, the placement of the building, the use of materials in the building. You know, we don't want new construction to look like historic structures, but we want them to complement and even use similar materials and forms in some cases, as long as they don't look like they're mimicking historic buildings. So some of those things that staff found this project is meeting is they're using a heavier, coarser material at the foundation. You know, the brick and the darker gray paneling materials are really appropriate for downtown. You know, transitioning to a lighter gray stucco at the top, so that that third story element is less apparent, is, I think, consistent with the design handbook. One of the big things that they're doing is it's in, in an area like our downtown, having parking lots behind the buildings and not on the streetscape, so all of your vehicular traffic is being accessed from the alley. So you don't have driveway cuts where the pedestrians are, so there's fewer conflicts, as well as just the visual of having the buildings screening the parking area. So by putting the, you know, the three row homes where they're at, that really helps create that streetscape. And then there are a lot of policies about mass and scale, especially when you're considering three stories. So one thing to note is that although this is a three-story residential building, it's 36 feet in height, we do have a lot of two-story commercial buildings that are really between that, you know, low 30s to mid 30 feet in height. So even though it's three stories, it's generally consistent with some of our taller two-story commercial buildings in downtown. Plus, as you can see from this side view, they really brought the, you know, the, the building out to the street, and then they're, they're transitioning it back, especially that third floor. They've stepped that building back in order to meet the design handbook policies. So that third story is intended to look subordinate to the two-story elements of the building. So that's where they've, they've done that with, you know, design and materials of the building. Within the municipal code, it does say that you're allowed three stories in downtown, but there does need to be varied building heights and the appearance of two-story massing at the street and pedestrian scale. Okay, so to the SRU criteria, so again, this is should residential uses be allowed. So I think in downtown Louisville, and especially in the commercial core, we do want predominantly commercial buildings. It's also good mostly to have, if you are going to have residential, that the residential's on the upper floor. So we do have a unique situation where we've got a mix. We've got one part of the development where the commercial's remaining on the ground floor, we've got residential on top, but there is a proposal to have, you know, ground floor residential for the three row homes. So, you know, in staff's analysis, we did feel that that was an appropriate use. Again, we wouldn't want ground floor residential throughout the entire core area, but it, you know, this was a very narrow area to try to fill in, you know, that parking lot, and you know, the use and the form of the buildings seem to make sense and be consistent with, with all of our plan policies. You know, residential uses also help bring activity and stability to downtown, which is part of the SRU criteria. You know, considering external effects, any development, whether it's residential or commercial, we're looking at how does that maybe impact noise or lighting? I think the residential uses, we really weren't concerned about noise, but really any redevelopment, we're looking at lighting. And they do have a compliant lighting plan, full cutoff fixtures, they've worked with staff to lower light levels in the parking lot. And really, overall, the development, we feel improves the streetscape and pedestrian character of downtown, helping provide, you know, enhance the areas, meeting some of those SRU criteria. Staff does support the sign waiver within the context of the commercial core of downtown. And they did put a design limitation on the sign, so they're actually smaller than what a downtown blade sign, so they would all be the same size metal frame sign if a resident wanted to install the sign. And so they would be of a higher character and quality and, you know, a little bit smaller than my, what might be allowed for a more traditional commercial business in downtown. So we thought the scale was appropriate as well. Just a note on the final plat. We did analyze the plat, and they're consolidating the lots into one lot. There are a couple of existing easements for, to the public to excel. We, both Public Works, Excel, looked at the plat. There was, there are no requests for additional easements. Oftentimes, we look at plats to make sure there's good access and that there aren't any needs for additional easements. There are no additional easements requested, so it's really just consolidating the lots in this case to facilitate the development. Just a note on development within downtown, there is a development cap established in our code of 475,000 square feet. The, here is what we have existing, so it's just over 300,000. These are projects that are approved, not necessarily under construction, but anything that has a current PUD. So, and then here's the proposed development adds a little over 7,000 square feet with those new row homes. So if, if everything that's approved is built, and this is approved and built, we're just under 350,000 square feet of development, so we're well under the development cap in downtown that's set by the code. So staff is recommending approval without any conditions in this case, and I'd be happy to answer any questions now or whenever the commission would like.
Thank you very much. Any commissioner questions of staff at this time? Commissioner Williams, you got the double hand, you win. Well, you, you are muted, however.
I was just going to ask, can everybody hear me? I have several questions. So the home occupation signs, do, do residents apply for these occupation signs, or are they pre-approved through the PUD?
Sure. So again, typically, if you have a home occupation, you're not allowed to have a sign, but anybody who is going to install a sign in a commercial area, including in this case, is required to get a building permit through the city. So before they install this, if this were approved, before they installed the sign, they would have to get a building permit. And then the PUD has a note that says that the, the signs would be these, a metal sign frame suspended from the balcony, and it would be 18 by 36. So any sign would have to meet that standard when we reviewed it for building permit.
Okay. So the, just because it's approved in the PUD, and there's a note on it, doesn't mean that they automatically get it, they need to apply for a permit. Great, thank you.
Yes.
Um, so the other question, so what process gets triggered to determine residency? How, how does the city know that it's fully rented, at least one?
So are you, so are you referring to the Fisher Building, the second story up there? Yeah, so I think there is a provision, and maybe you're referring to this, but if you don't implement your special review use, if you're not using it for a year, you lose the use.
Correct.
So there is, you know, that's an interesting question. There is no, you know, they don't register the use with the city. I think there would be a tenant finish type permit, so we would probably be issuing a building permit for them to renovate for the residential use. I would say that if, if, you know, they renovated as a residence and nobody actually lives there for over a year, you could use, lose the use. But, but we would have to verify that through basically just obtaining information. I don't think we require any type of registration. You know, we could ask for some type of, I mean, we could look into it on an annual basis or something like that if commission felt it was important, but I think we'd have to take that if it seemed, if, if there was a report that it was abandoned as a residential use, we could look into it. I think certainly if they, you know, converted it to an office use or some other non-residential use, they usually get a building permit to convert it to that other type. They would be required to, to be a completely different type of occupancy that we'd have to verify.
Okay. So there's, there's no real process or, or formal way that we determine this then? Just wondering.
Not really. Yeah, just through building permits.
Okay. Um, and then, let's see here, one more. You know what? You answered it already.
Okay.
Commissioner Deal?
Yeah. Rob, with regard to parking in downtown always being critical, I guess can you highlight or go over a little bit of the discussions with the applicant on, I don't know, were there, were there any other ways to try and get those one or two spaces to get, to hit the ratio? And then just a question about the guest parking. The report referred to one guest parking space is required. Is that per unit, or?
No. So once you have a certain number of units, it triggers the additional space. So based on our formula, they only needed one guest space, and it does say those guest spaces can be provided off-site. One of the things about their reconfiguration of the street and closing that driveway cut, I'm just going to pull up my screen here, is they actually gain a street space in this location. So part, you know, if this is approved and they develop, they would, in addition to the brick banding, you know, there'd be a requirement that this get restripped, and there'd be one additional street space. So as we were looking at this, we felt that even without providing an additional street space, you're allowed to count adjacent street parking as your guest space in a new development. So, you know, between the fact that they were adding a space and the code allows it, staff was supportive of counting that as the guest space. I think in that, I, you know, we did look, work with the applicant a lot on configuration of the parking lot, and I think they've, you know, I, I think they've provided the most efficient plan they could provide on parking. I would say also parking in downtown, the way our parking code is set up is, it's not intended to provide, I would say, 100%, it's not like a suburban commercial development where our parking ratios are designed to provide all of your parking onsite, 100%. In downtown, we want to provide some parking onsite, but it wouldn't be a very pedestrian-friendly environment. So we try to get, you know, reasonable amount of parking coming off the alleys, and then having more on-street parking and public parking lots. So that's why the city actually purchases and manages downtown parking lots, including in D-Lo and in downtown. So we use the funds that they provided, that they would provide for those spaces to, you know, purchase and maintain public parking in downtown.
So these spaces then would be basically only for the residents or the customers of the businesses of those residents?
That's right. So all the spaces that you see on the plan are private spaces, none of them are public. We have leased spaces from private properties such as this in the past, say in the evening. So that's part of our downtown parking program. I think maybe even at this property, I'm not 100% sure, but I think even, I don't think we are currently, but in the past, we'll lease spaces, say after 5 o'clock when all the office and, especially if it's an office building, we may lease a certain number of spaces from them in the evening that become public.
And then my, my only other question is regarding the home occupation, the signs and the waiver. It's an interesting concept to have. Does this exist at all in Louisville today, or in nearby cities?
You know, we do have a lot of home occupations. So what you might see is, you know, somebody who maybe has an accounting office or a therapy office in their home, and so they, they'll get clients, or maybe somebody providing music lessons is a very common home occupation. So you'll have a few client, and we, we limit the number of people who can come to the house at a time, and there can't be any external effects of the business, so it has to be very low-key. But again, that's kind of the suburban environment, and you're very limited in the types of occupations you can have and how many people can be there. For example, if you're have, if you're maybe doing music classes in your home, I think you're limited to like three or four, I think it's four students, right? So you couldn't run a, a big music school out of your home. It has to be a very limited number of students.
And the limitations you're describing, is that in the municipal code?
In the municipal code.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Do we have, and actually, this is what I thought Ben was getting at, but do we have in downtown Louisville, any live work situations where, you know, the, like the true live work, where it's a business and a resident, residents?
Not that I'm aware of.
So this would be that?
Yeah. This would not be live work. This, yeah, we, we do allow it, but this would not be live work, because live work, you can have, you know, you can have, there's a wide you know, you can have, there's a wider range of uses of, you know, commercial uses you could use your building for, a much wider use of uses, and you have to provide parking and things like that. So this is, and you have to have more square footage dedicated to it. So this is a different, they're, they're not proposing live-work. Any resident anywhere in the city, including in downtown, and there are some residents downtown, are allowed to have home occupations.
Okay, but they don't normally have signs, though, correct?
None, yeah. Signs are prohibited under our code. So this would be a waiver to the code provision that prohibits signs.
Um, so what, what makes this? Why do this? What makes this different?
Yeah.
It's not a live-work, but yet they can have a home occupation and a sign above.
Right. So let's say, let's say they weren't asking for the sign waiver, for one, and these are approved and they're built. Well, you're allowed to have a home occupation. That's just, that's just in the code, right? So, you know, that if they wanted to have piano lessons or violin lessons, right, and that was their occupation, they could do that in their home. What they're asking for is, well, if we have a home occupation, could we have signs? And the, the logic is, this is a commercial, mixed-use commercial area. So signs are not, like, if there was a sign in a more suburban neighborhood of the city, that would look unusual. There would be a potentially an impact. But this is a commercial area. They're surrounded by storefronts and restaurants with signs. So it'd be consistent with the character of the area is the, is the potential reason why you might allow it.
Okay, um, and you don't see this as being an issue for other home occupation permits and people that are interested, you know, elsewhere in the city that they're not going to be asking for signs?
I would not expect other home occupations would ask for signs. I know some home occupations have probably wanted signs, but, you know, we wouldn't, you know, we, we don't allow them. They would probably end up before the Board of Adjustment, because they're, you know, we're allowed to waive it potentially because they're doing a PUD in this case. But if a, you know, if a, just a homeowner or, you know, somebody who's even renting a home and they want to have a home occupation and a sign, and we don't allow it, they'd have to go to the Board of Adjustment, and they'd have to show hardship and all of these things that you have to meet with an actual zoning variance.
Okay, and we're, we're basing this all on the fact that this is the downtown core area and it's a commercial area. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks. Is there any estimation of how many residential units are in that, that blue-shaded core area?
I do not have an estimate. That's an interesting question. I think there are a small handful that I can, very small handful that I can think of. When you get into the transition area, there's probably a few more, but I can only think of a, a few. There are, there were some new residents, I'm trying to think if it's in the core area. So if you think just south of Moxie, where the, there's the eye doctor and some other businesses just south of Moxie, there are residential units approved for that property.
Right.
Which are relatively new. And then there's some more historic homes, just a small, a couple of historic homes in the core area that I'm aware of.
And then how about economic or fiscal impact?
Well, you know, you know, we didn't do, you know, say, our fiscal impact model for this type of development. But I think when we were looking at economic stability, you know, you are taking what was commercial or office space, transitioning it to residential. So there are additional, let's say, services, service costs to the city. But I think from an economic stability and downtown vitality, vitality standpoint, we've, at least in staff's analysis, we felt, you know, this really helped take, you know, an area that, you know, it's, there's, there's some demand for residential, and the residential helps activate downtown at different types of times of the day. So having a mix of residential uses are desirable, and, you know, that's discussed in, you know, in our planning policies as well, including in the framework plan. So the framework plan says that even though the core area is primarily commercial, that the city should consider through SRU some mix of residential, because it's, it it helps support the, the commercial areas of downtowns to have a mix of residential in it. That actually helps kind of boost, although it's, there's not a direct sales tax or anything from that use, it helps kind of boost activity in the area.
Uh-huh, and do you have any concerns with Steinbach Pavilion being so close by regarding, you know, kind of conflicts with sound, noise?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think there's maybe some concern, and we did talk to the applicant fairly extensively about the location and how it would be next to, you know, street fair and farmer's market and other loud activities. And I think, you know, there's only certain people who will want to live there. And I, I, we, we would, we expect that they would be well aware that they're living in a downtown environment. You know, there may be some mitigation, construction-wise on buildings, but with such a small-scale building, you know, there's extra insulation and special types of windows and things that you, you know, you might see for buildings that are in really loud areas. But that, you know, that's usually next to highways and things. I think if you're in a downtown area, you're gonna want to open your windows anyways and things like that. So, yeah, we, we talked about it. I don't know that it's, it's mitigated specifically other than, you know, the, the, the people that are going to be interested in living in that environment hopefully are aware of some of those conflicts.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Havner, did you have any questions at this time?
I don't, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. With that, then I'd like to invite the applicant up for their presentation. And I think we're, there we go.
Good evening. Eric Hartrop, Hartrop Associates, nine fifty Spruce Street. This is the building that we're talking about is where my office is. And I've been here since about two thousand nine, previously to that. I had an office in Boulder, a larger firm, and then previously to that, I and a partner owned the State Mercantile Building, had renovated that and my office was there. So I've been a downtown resident for quite a while. I'm an Old Town resident as well. I live about four blocks away, and we hear of the street fair and we like it, you know? So I think that anybody near downtown does get to enjoy the street fair, and I don't think that's a bad thing. So just addressing a couple of quick questions. Rob, I believe that we're actually giving back two street spaces. When we eliminate the curb cut, just because of the geometry over there, we're able to get two more on the street. So that's a bonus. And I think another thing about parking that I want to address is that the, the idea of mixed-use developments has a lot of benefits. As Rob alluded to, the benefit to the businesses that are nearby, having more residential units helps to support those businesses. The other thing, in an environment as we have here, where we do have limited parking in the parking lot, although we've always got empty spaces, there, there becomes crossover because a lot of residents don't utilize the spaces during the day. And then, obviously, a lot of businesses don't utilize the spaces at night. And so there's a natural flow of the, of the parking that gets shared in an environment like that. So even though we're meeting the downtown parking requirements, maybe one or two, depending on how much commercial ends up being left in the building. But I believe that we'll still have more than adequate parking and, and we'll probably have some empty spaces back there as well. So I think it's a, actually a more efficient use of the land to use part of that parking lot for additional use, which is the, those three residential units. So I'd like to fire up a PowerPoint here. Think I can do that without? Any?
We have to do something to allow you to share a screen, yeah?
Yeah, it said that I can.
It should be doable.
Did, is anybody seeing? A PowerPoint?
If you, did, did, there is a share a screen button, it should be.
Yeah, I hit that. Oh, here we go. It, I think you gotta hit it twice for some reason. There it is.
There we go. Now it's making progress.
Yeah, that's what we wanted. All right. So this is a view from seven forty at their street dining area across to the Fisher Building. Named for Gary Fisher, if anybody knew Gary, he was a contractor that built this building. And his son Bart Fisher has built a lot of buildings in downtown. And the Fisher family goes back a long time in Louisville here. In their generations, they actually built this, the original Steinbach lumberyard, which is where I'm standing right now in this picture. So there's a lot of history downtown that, that lives on. You can see the three residential units here, and we had quite a discussion both with staff and then into the Historic Preservation Meeting, which you might have seen those minutes. And then at, after that meeting, about sort of how to render the three stories and how light or heavy the first two stories should be and materiality and so forth. So here's where we landed, which really sort of picks up some cues from the surrounding buildings with, you know, the rectilinear forms, a more heavy brick base, some steel elements like we find on the library. And then, Christian Williams, your questions about live-work are sort of interesting because we had quite a robust discussion about what should happen with these sort of row homes. And one of the ideas is that if we make the main floor space inviting to use commercially, then people who have a, a home occupation would be probably drawn to this product to locate their home and their, their business. And as we know, a lot of people have shifted from more traditional office settings to working from home. And so no matter what kind of business somebody might have, we think that having some storefront windows along the street and a separate entrance for the, those spaces, separate from the residential entry, gives us the ability to have somebody really utilize that in a more commercial way. And that's going to further activate the street. You know, a little bit of recent history about our bill, I say our building because I've been involved with it for years, the renovations for the library, from the library to a commercial building, having my office here. Rudolph's have done a great job of sort of activating this building with tenants. But we have had some attrition, and if you've been familiar with this building, the, the commercial space on the first floor has struggled over the years. And so that's the nature of downtown retail spaces. It just is. You know, we have the same issue all over downtown, the storefronts that are inactive for long periods of time. We currently have office vacancy as well on the second floor in this building. So I think that one of the realities is that there is a real market for the residential. And from a planning principle, having residential uses downtown makes a lot of sense. The framework plan has talked about residential mixed-use since the nineties. And that concept has never been codified in our zoning ordinance. But it certainly has been sort of an aspirational goal in the framework plan. And know that downtown has always been a mixed-use environment. There's always been mom and pop, you know, storefronts up front, houses in the back, houses on Main Street that are sometimes used as offices and sometimes used as residential over the years. So it has been a mixed-use environment. It's just that we've outlawed the residential use through our zoning code. So such that if a residential use is abandoned for a period of time, then you don't just get it back. You have to go through this process that we're going through now for the special review use. I know all of you know that, but just in terms of a little bit of history, it, it feels like maybe we should revisit this idea of residential uses downtown and a mixed-use environment. And I think this is a great, small toe in the water to see how that, how that really works. Again, I think that one of the great benefits of this project is we're taking one of the biggest problems with a lot of downtowns, which is parking lots that take up storefront space. And so you have streetscape that should be activated with buildings, and you're looking at a, at a parking lot. And so by putting the townhomes here at the end of this parking lot, we're really going to solve a problem that is identified in the downtown handbook in terms of how parking lots meet the street. The environment around Front Street is pretty varied. We have, it's not landmark historic, but it's a building that's been around since the early nineteen hundreds. This building on the corner that's been renovated, a new building, infill building next to that that has some of the same elements of brick, the steel elements on that, although that is a newer building. And then, as you go further north on Front Street, some sort of rectilinear buildings that were built in the eighties or renovated in the eighties. Some buildings were taken down, some were added on to and renovated. And then just south of our parking lot is what was a residential unit being used for commercial. And I believe in the very back of this, that red gable is, behind that, there's, I believe, still a residential use back there, at least there was recently. I don't know if there still is, but that property is actually for sale right now. And so my guess is that somebody would probably redevelop that site eventually if they purchased that property. This is the east side of Front Street, and we know the historic building that used to be the old Louisville Inn is now seven forty Front Street. Major renovation and restoration to that building. And again, that building that's sort of directly across from the townhome units is obviously a more contemporary building. So we, we know downtown is a very eclectic place and a, and a real varied mix of styles, new buildings, living next to historic structures. And of course, our most prominent neighbor is the Louisville Library. And also probably one of the most active sites downtown. City Hall rivals that some, some council meeting nights, but a lot of traffic to the library, obviously. So this building, as Rob gave you the history of it, built in nineteen eighty-four and then renovated for the. and then, um, renovated for the city's library. The library used to be where City Hall is in the ground floor there, um, on the south as you walk in. It's kind of fun when we moved the library from there to this building. Um, there was actually sort of a book brigade of just sort of hand carrying and trucking, uh, books down, down Spruce Street from one building to the other. And, uh, it served Louisville well as a library for, um, the time that it, it housed the library late, the late, um, eighties, uh, to the mid two thousands. And so the Rudolphs did a, a great homage to the library with the mural that is on the west end of the library, if you're all familiar with that. Yeah, you stand in the right place on the street and you get a view through these Gothic windows out to the sky, uh, which is pretty interesting addition to the building. So that obviously is going to stay as well. Uh, and as Rob mentioned, we really don't have a lot of, um, changes to this building other than making the windows operable. Uh, we've got a couple of little, uh, sort of French balconies that go, um, uh, on these two spaces that flank the entry there. And in the back, that you can see we've got some balconies back there, but we'll have some additional stairs and, um, balconies in the back, um, to really have a nice patio area for each one of the, the residences that are, um, on that second floor. So we really look at, you know, what are we trying to do with this project? And, you know, frankly, um, part of its economic, we've got an underutilized office building. And, uh, what can be done to help this particular property, but more importantly, help all of downtown, uh, with some more active uses? Obviously, this building will maintain the commercial storefronts on the first floor. And, uh, then we will actually improve the pedestrian experience on Front Street significantly with the new building at the end of the parking lot. And really providing for the parking that this project will demand. And, um, then really looking at that mix of uses. Um, and very interested in your, um, ideas about residential uses downtown because, um, the Moffett Lofts is the property south of the, uh, Moxie Building. And that was really the first mixed use project downtown that sort of ventured into that, uh, residential use. I think it's been quite successful. Um, a lot of people have thought about doing mixed use. We actually had a couple of things, um, that had been approved over the years, never implemented. But, um, a lot of times there's a hesitancy to even think about doing mixed use downtown because it is a special review use in our code and how does that work? And so it's not approved by right. So does that mean that the city doesn't want residential uses downtown? Um, I mean, I think those are some of the questions that perhaps this, um, project might start to answer as well. We think that our design, um, helps to reinforce the nature of downtown and, um, actually respects the historic, uh, architecture around downtown. And obviously we're, um, it's important to comply with the design guidelines. Um, as Rob said, this is the building. Um, what we've sort of outlined is that there's basically five units along the second floor here. Two of the units flank the, uh, core of the building, which has an elevator. So these can be our ADA units. Uh, it could be, uh, a live work unit. It could be a, uh, um, an office or partially office unit. And so that's why we wanted to build in flexibility into these two units. Because whoever, um, occupies these might have a different idea than just a residential apartment. And so that's why, um, until we proceed a little further into the design and, um, the costs and the market study and everything else, I think it's, um, it will be useful to have the flexibility, um, for that bit of the, of the project to, um, have either or. And, um, so we've talked about the, this, the Front Street, um, and how that third story recedes from the two-story. So really, when you're looking at about a twenty-three foot height on our two-story element, that is lower than our, most of our commercial buildings that are two-story. Uh, the library is thirty-six feet, as an example. You know, this could go up to, um, a three-story forty-five foot building. And obviously with the residential use, we don't need as a high of a floor to floor as you do with the commercial building. Clearly, the commercial guidelines really were skewed towards, uh, this idea that we were going to have commercial buildings that might want to go to three-story in the downtown core area. And how do you handle that? So we've kind of got a mini version of that with a step back third story, even though it doesn't go to the same height that the three-story commercial buildings would go in this zone. And this is from the south, uh, southeast across Front Street, looking back at the building. And again, you can see those steel and brick elements and more detailed, uh, pedestrian scale elements on the first floor and those storefront windows that hopefully will be animated. It doesn't mean that, that's not just going to be a residential use on that first floor, but, uh, it, I think it's inviting to have a more commercial use there. And hopefully the tenants that look at these, uh, units would be, um, more drawn to that. So that's our presentation for tonight. Um, Eric Rudolph is here, the owner. If you'd like to ask him any questions, and certainly, um, I'm here to answer any of your questions as well.
Thank you for the presentation, Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the, the, the work home, uh, opportunity. And I guess what is your vision for what type of businesses might be interested in those spaces? Obviously, the market will dictate that, but I'm curious what you think could go in.
I mean, I, I would see, um, you know, you could have an accountant, an attorney, um, an architect. You know, um, as, uh, Rob mentioned, you know, somebody with, uh, a guitar studio or a piano studio, um, giving lessons. You know, I think that the, one of the things that may come up as this goes forward. I mean, I'd love to see somebody who's an artist who has their studio on the first floor and has their front door open and somebody walks in and says, oh my God, I love that painting you're doing. Can I buy that or this one that's on the wall here? Now, is that a retail commercial use that's, um, outlawed in the, um, home occupation? You know, uh, part of our code, it, I haven't gone through every use that could go downtown, um, and how that squares with the home occupation. But there could be those kinds of things that want to be there that really don't fit. And that's going to really be up to, um, you know, the, the city, um, zoning, um, planning department to, uh, sort of evaluate those home occupations. Uh, but certainly if somebody wanted to have an art studio on the first floor of their house and they had their door open and somebody walked in and they sold somebody a painting, I think that's just fine. You know, home occupations are regulated in the, the sales tax code and, you know, all of those things as well. So, you know, they'd be having to pay sales tax just as they would if they were in their home and they sold somebody something. Uh, so, so I don't think any of, there, there would be any conflicts there. We did look at the live work as a possibility, um, because that's what this feels like, right? It feels like, oh, that's the work, you know, I'm going to have my, I'm going to live above my store. Um, I might just have a little candy shop down there, whatever. Um, but the problem is that the live work requirements, um, would dictate that a third of the square footage of that, each one of those units would have to be dedicated to a commercial use. Um, and couldn't be used for any kind of residential use. And then it would anticipate that then that square footage is going to require a certain amount of parking. And so the, the live work requirements would add to the parking requirement, assuming that you've got a larger footprint of commercial space there that is going to add to your parking demand and so forth. And as we looked at all the things that we would have to ask, either ask for waivers for or buy additional parking spaces or, you know, buy, buy the building next door and tear it down and put a parking lot there. You know, things like that didn't make any sense at all. So for the amount of square footage that's on the main floor, it really felt like fitting it into the home occupation works just fine for a lot of the things that people would use their home, um, for, you know, in a, where they've got a commercial use that they want to have in their home.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions of the applicant? At this time, seeing none, then I'd like to open it up to public comment. If anybody is here, would like to speak to the project, please use the raise your hand button or star nine. I don't even know if we have anybody who has phone only this evening.
Don't see any hands raised yet, Chair. We'll give everyone another minute.
All right.
Um, yep, no hands, no hands raised for this.
Okay, um, any commissioner additional questions, uh, at this point? Otherwise, we're going to move into closing statement. Then if I can ask Mr. Harkant for a, uh, closing statement?
I just, um, I, I think I tried to express everything that we've sort of ruminated about on this project. And, um, I think it's a very interesting project. I'm, I'm really happy to be involved in it because it does address a lot of the things that I think we should be addressing downtown. It's a solution to several problems. And, um, I just, I think it's a, I think it's going to be a great addition to downtown. And I'm anxious to see, uh, it get approved and to see how it lands, uh, on this bill.
Thank you very much. And then we move to a staff closing statement.
Staff doesn't have anything else to add. Um, again, staff's recommending approval with no conditions.
Thank you very much. Woo, I will now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Any thoughts from commissioners? Commissioner Hefner?
Uh, yeah, I'll lead off. Um, I, I just want to say a couple of things. First, uh, I, I think it's an obvious and significant improvement to change a surface parking lot to row homes. I think that's a, a big net gain for downtown. It would be something else, I think, if we were talking about replacing some other use, um, some other high value use. But a surface lot is a, in my view, at least a pretty low value use. And, and we have a, a housing crisis and not enough housing and squeezing, um, three housing units onto this relatively small piece of land seems like a no-brainer. And then also on the housing front, I, you know, sort of in my view, this is, this is what people talk about is the, the missing middle of housing, something in between a single-family home and, and a higher density development. And Louisville doesn't have a ton of that. Um, and I think this is a, a really interesting idea and it'll be interesting to see how it plays out. And I'm sure there are lots of folks who would be eager, uh, to, to live in what look like some pretty nice row homes. So I, I will be in support of this. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hefner. Commissioner Deal, you've unmuted. Go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, no, I'm, uh, in agreement with the staff report and in general favorable of, uh, of the proposal. I agree with Commissioner Hefner's comments, uh, especially the, the focus on, you know, activating downtown with having some more residential units down there. I think, you know, anything to get, um, you know, kind of a core set of business for the businesses we do have, uh, business goers, uh, being down there will be a positive for all of the downtown businesses. You know, the point about is this, you know, potentially the beginning of a new transition to more mixed use housing in downtown. Again, I'm in general, you know, in very high level, in general favor of, of activating downtown in more ways. Um, but I'm sure there's some, some cons that come along with additional mixed use developments downtown. For example, parking and, uh, density, traffic, et cetera. So, um, you know, not that we're here to deliberate that, but, uh, just wanted to make the point that, you know, approving this doesn't necessarily, shouldn't necessarily mean it's, you know, something that, you know, everybody's going to be in favor from either a commission standpoint or maybe from city council. Uh, and I think that's it. And I'm glad that the, uh, the mural will not be touched.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Williams, any thoughts?
Yes, um, so I just wanted to, uh, thank Eric for the very nice presentation. Um, I enjoyed all the history there. And I, uh, I think this is a great, different kind of product, especially for downtown. It makes a perfect sense to me. Um, I kind of see it as a live work, um, just because, um, uh, it combines, you know, two things, um, and they, people have the opportunity to, uh, have a business in it or treat it as a row home or whatever. Um, but I think this is something different to bring to downtown. I don't think this is high density. I don't think it's gonna, um, you know, kill parking or anything like that. I think it definitely, uh, brings, um, good value, um, to our businesses downtown to have a little bit of activity. I highly agree with that. Um, and I think that the, um, it's incredibly well thought out. The design, um, guidelines are, uh, well thought out, um, on this project. And, um, I couldn't even think of, uh, anything to improve it. So I'm going to be in support. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Williams. Um, I also find myself in favor of it at this point. And I would agree, Commissioner Deal, on a very high level. I, I think, uh, mixed use is, is great. Um, and yet, yeah, we will, uh, as a community, get to evaluate any of that going forward if there's ever movement towards more of that. So be interesting to see how that happens. Um, it is interesting too to note that in the DLO, um, area, at one point, there was a fairly significant number of units, uh, that were going to be live work. Those did not kind of stand the test of time, you know, up until now at least. Um, and so, um, there, there had not been a lot of demand for that, uh, at, at the time as the project moved forward. So just interesting to note, um, so it'll be interesting to see what happens here as well. With that then, I would entertain a motion.
I'd go ahead and move approval of resolution number seven, series twenty twenty-one, a resolution recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment and special review use to allow conversion of a portion of the existing building to include up to five dwelling units and a new residential development with three dwelling units and a final plat to consolidate lots for property located at nine five zero Spruce Street and seven two five Front Street.
Second.
It was a second from Commissioner Williams. Thank you. And a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Chair Brownie?
Yes. Motion carries. Next stop is city council for you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
All right then, um, we'll move to our next, um, item on the agenda, uh, which is a request for continuance for the avid for adventure mural, P U D. Lisa, is that you?
Um, you know, uh, staff member Bauer, Kim Bauer is that one? I'm not sure if she's video ready, but basically we are just requesting a continuance for that item. The applicant was out of town, uh, this week. So we'll be continuing that to July eighth.
Great, all right. Um, I would, uh, request a motion for that. So moved? Thank you. Second, uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Chair Brownie?
Yes, thank you. Moving on then to our agenda I D C, St. Louis Parish and Boulder Innovation Campus filing to P U D and plat. And Lisa, I believe that one is yours.
Yeah, so we're going to be requesting a continuance for that one as well to the July eighth meeting as we wouldn't have quorum for that item, um, given the attendee, um, mix tonight.
Got it. Uh, so moved. Take a second.
Back again?
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Hefner?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Chair Brownie?
Yes. That should be continued also, which moves us into. Should be continued also, which moves us into item D, the Foundry GDP Amendment. So I'm going to repeat, I will now open the public hearing on a request for a GDP amendment. At the Foundry. Also known as the Dakota General Development Plan. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties. Wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. Procedure for the hearing will be as follows. First, there'll be a presentation and testimony by city staff. Followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting. Excuse me. My computer or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak is asked to use the raise hand function. If participating by computer or star nine if calling in by telephone. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Purpose of public comment is receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I'll then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter, may approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. And can we confirm proper notification, please?
Yeah, certainly. So the property or the. The application did meet all of the public notice requirements. Under the municipal code, it was post or published in the Daily Camera on May twenty third and the property was posted. May twenty fourth. And again, this was continued from the June tenth meeting.
Thank you very much. Do we have any planning commissioner disclosures? Seeing none. Commissioner Williams.
I just want to disclose that I live. About a hundred yards from the property. And that will not affect me.
Thank you. So if we can then begin with the staff presentation.
Great. Can you all see the PowerPoint on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So tonight we are here to consider the Seventh Amendment to the Code, Dakota General Development Plan, as well as the Second Amendment to the Foundry Subdivision Agreement. And again, we're commonly referring this to this as the Foundry. So that was kind of the previous branded name from prior applicants that this applicant is carrying forward at this time. So again, just for a little bit of context, we are in the north quadrant of the city on the north. It's founded by Pascal Drive. The yellow line you see is the border with Lafayette. Highway forty two is on the right. Summit View is on the south. Calix Avenue was along the west. So just for a little bit of background, kind of going into what got us to this point, the property is platted and it is consists of roughly five point eight two acres. It was zone plan, community zone district, along with the larger area of Dakota General Development Plan. In twenty sixteen, the, the current owner, previous applicant requested a general development plan. Amendment as well as concurrent approval of the Foundry PUD and plat. And that PUD contemplated thirty one thousand nine hundred and sixty square feet of commercial, along with thirty two dwelling units. Twenty four of which required occupancy by persons fifty five and older, as well as a concurrency requirement to build the commercial with residential. In twenty nineteen, that PUD was authorized for extension by planning commission and city council to April second of twenty twenty. So that date has. Since lapsed, as well as the concurrency requirement was amended to reduce the requirement to. One of the two commercial buildings and that applicant at that time intended to build kind of that larger Foundry building is what they called it. With fourteen thousand one hundred and ten square feet, along with all of the residential. So that's kind of what led us where we are today. And just for a little bit of background, I just wanted to bring this up for everyone's recollection, if helpful, but this was the previous PUD. Again, it contemplated thirty two units. Over four buildings, kind of on the front facing Calix and then two commercial structures fronting highway forty two. So essentially, the GDP tonight is the zoning document. There is not a concurrent PUD and plat that we're considering this evening. And so really. We are talking just about the standards within the GDP, which basically set the zoning. And future PUDs would be required prior to any development on the site. So this GDP, just want to be clear for everyone. This GDP does not authorize construction. It will have to go through a further process to establish actual architecture, site design, layouts, things like that. But essentially, the primary changes here tonight for the GDP amendment are to reduce the maximum commercial square footage to fifteen thousand square feet. Whereas the previous GDP allowed up to seventy six thousand square feet, would increase the residential units to fifty nine from thirty two. It revises the vehicular access from Calix Avenue. Previously, it was two way, which means kind of headlights could come into the neighborhood. The applicant has revised that to one way. Public Works has reviewed that and the traffic study shows that it should function just fine with that. There's a subdivision amendment to remove the requirement for twenty four of the units to be occupied by persons. Fifty five years of age and older. There also is in your packet a referral response letter from BVSD. Just noting that there is sizable room within the schools that these units would be. Within their home area to account for student population from that for the fifty nine units. Additionally, the GDP would reduce the maximum allowed height of all buildings, both commercial and residential to thirty feet from thirty five. As well as some revisions to lot width and lot size standards, which we can go into if needed. I want to show this concept plan because this was in the applicant's presentation and this is. It was in their application materials, as well as the applicant did, you know, a number of neighborhood meetings. About their desires and goals for the project. And ultimately, this is kind of a concept plan that they all coalesced around. In the public is fairly familiar with, but I want to be clear that this is a concept plan in no way, shape or form has staff analyzed this particular plan for kind of compliance with. All of the, you know, design regulations and things like that. So this is one of what potentially could be many. Development scenarios that could result from approval of the GDP. But generally, I mean, I think, you know, the, the, the final PUD design will also need to kind of lean on comp plan policy, which pushes the commercial out toward. Highway forty two. The GDP does show the central gathering area, so that would be kind of the one. You know, site design parameter as well as the access network. So really, I think, you know, generally, this, the concept plan wouldn't change significantly as far as kind of location of uses. I just want to be clear on exactly what we're talking about tonight. So next up, we'll get to a little bit of the traffic so we can talk about a comparison, but I just want to show. Basically, the, the image on your left is a snip of the actual site plan from the GDP. So again, you can see there's no specific site plan that would be under consideration this evening. Shows the central gathering area, shows the access point. So basically a right in, right out here off of highway forty two. There is the signal up here on the north border of Lewisville with Lafayette. So there'd be a right in, right out here at Pascal Drive. The one way access in here from Calix and then the southern one here off of Summit View. So just a little bit of context there. We compared this traffic study with the previous traffic study and generally, you know, based on kind of the, the current GDP. As to the proposed GDP, which is again, the column on the far left and the column on the far right. You know, the traffic reduces pretty significantly. Related to the current PUD and the proposed GDP, it's not a substantial change, you know, kind of your peak hour AM PM peaks. Shift around a bit and the applicant does have their traffic engineer on the call who's happy to kind of go into this in more detail. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about density comparison. We can come back to this if needed, but. One of the, you know, kind of comprehensive plan policies is around, you know, higher density pushed out to the. The primary corridors, which in this case would be highway forty two. So I just wanted to do this as a comparison. So kind of within the Dakota General Development Plan, which also I want to be clear includes the Kestrel development, but. Kestrel kind of came in as kind of a one off GDP amendment and is pretty fundamentally different. As it's a Boulder County Housing Authority project. And so we didn't really include Kestrel in the analysis, but I just want to be clear technically it is part of. It's one of the amendments to the Dakota GDP. But you can see densities within the neighborhood range from kind of the lowest density at three point two dwelling units an acre. For the single family homes, you transition. Up to the patio homes. It was a Boulder Creek product where thirty eight units at five point five. Again, a little more dense here with lanterns at six point three. We get into what we call the overlook, which again is a Boulder Creek Town Home attached product. That's at eight point nine. And then finally, our highest density within the overall GDP or the Steel Ranch South or North Main Apartments. At twenty four dwelling units an acre. And again, the GDP, I don't have that image here. I didn't, I don't have that shown. But the GDP proposes a density of roughly ten point two dwelling units an acre. So it would be slightly more than the overlook, just as far as comparison there. I do want to note that the applicant, since publication of the packet, and I sent this out to you and it's an addendum earlier today. The applicant had made revisions to the concurrency requirement within the GDP. And so this was, this is not a condition of approval. The applicant has actually amended their application. To, related to the concurrency requirement. And so basically, that would be sixty percent of the residential permits would be tied to fifty percent. Of the commercial construction. And then again, the final forty of the residential, forty percent of the residential permits. With fifty percent of the commercial permits. So essentially, you'd get a hundred percent concurrency, you know, kind of collectively with all of the residential construction. So just want to be clear on that. We can talk more about that. The, the more specific language is noted on the GDP, but essentially, that's the intent. It is only tied to core and shell development, so it does not have any tie to lease rate, you know, lease percentages, things like that. So just want to be clear there. I did also in that addendum provide an optional resolution of approval reflecting that change. So we already have that in hand for you. Noting. Recommendation of approval based on this change. So with that, we'll get into analysis. And so primarily with our PCZD Zone District, the criteria basically is around the purpose. Being, you know, coordinated development, but primarily leans on comprehensive plan policy. And in this area, this property is also part of the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan. And so we looked at both of those. And really, both of those contemplate higher density housing along the corridors with neighborhood serving retail and office. The comprehensive plan would have allowed up to three stories in this area, but the small area plan reduced those heights to two stories. And so as a response, the applicant reduced their maximum height from thirty five down to thirty feet for all structures. And again, you know, all of that would get reviewed at PUD. The GDP, we find supports housing policies that require a mix of housing types and prices. The specific policies that we're leaning on, I have here on the slide. I'm not going to read those for you. And I also want to note that city council did recently adopt the inclusionary zoning ordinance that you all reviewed. Last month. The only change to the ordinance were, were just some tweaks. The fee went up slightly, just as far as background on that as a side note here. The fee went up slightly and they removed the restriction for thirty year limitation on rental. So they made that in perpetuity as well, but any future PUDs for this property. Are now subject to that inclusionary housing ordinance. And due to the amended application. The comprehensive plan requires positive fiscal benefits within the area. And so with revisions. Staff finds that the proposal now meets that one hundred percent concurrency. It meets the fiscal policy of. Of positive result. So I just want to note, you know, we have a couple of resolutions out there. We, we did initially recommend denial based on the lack of commercial concurrency, which resulted. In negative fiscal balance, which we find did not meet comprehensive plan policy. But I also, you know, I also want to be clear that there's no requirement in the municipal code or in the comprehensive plan that every application. Meet every policy, you know, so really, it's really a planning's commission's discretion if they find that, you know. Even with the fiscal balance being positive, it's, you know, in, in all honesty, it's relatively neutral, you know, it's, it's positive, but very slightly. And there's a lot of assumptions built in there. But I just want to be clear that a planning commission has full discretion to kind of weigh and balance the applicable policies as they. See fit. So it's not a checklist that, you know, all need to be met. And so we lean on, again, kind of impacts to neighborhood and we lean on the housing policy here. As well as the amended application. And so with that, we have the revised resolution. With the approval language, if planning commission is so inclined to find that, and if not, then the resolution for denial. With findings related to fiscal policy were provided to you in your packet. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on the application.
Mr. Questions. Commissioner Deal. Are you still muted?
My dog from interrupting the meeting. Lisa, with regard, so the, the twenty sixteen Foundry PUD site plan that's in the packet. I'm just interested to understand the building ENF. Was it indicated whether those were going to be one or two stories?
Sure. So I'm going to pull that site plan up here. Can you all see that screen again?
Yeah.
Okay, so buildings E and F. Building F was kind of a mix of one and two stories. I believe it was kind of, you know, pushing right at thirty five feet. I don't recall exactly. I think maybe the max building, the primary building height was maybe around thirty two and it had some appurtenances. I think within the interior space, there was some kind of center space that really utilized that whole entire volume. And then kind of within the wings of the building, there were maybe some second floor mezzanines, things like that, what have you. Yeah, but definitely this building was, you know, really close to that thirty five feet. The building E, I'd have to pull the final PUD, but I. I recall it was a single story, so it was lower, but I'll pull the PUD to be sure. While we look at other questions. And then buildings A, B, C, and D, these were also three stories, so they're residential product. So their floor plates were a little lower, but I believe these were right at that thirty five foot height limit as well. So really, all buildings on the site. Based on that PUD, we're all, you know, pretty close to that maximum height limit of thirty five feet, but we will confirm that for you here shortly.
Okay, yeah, I mean, the, the small area plan is fairly clear. The buildings along the South Boulder Road. Should primarily be one story with a second story allowed under specific conditions. And then there's a number of conditions, you know. Basically, it can't limit impact on view sheds or cast shadows on surrounding properties, et cetera. And I was just curious if, you know, we had already approved, the commission had already approved over one story facing highway forty two and then obviously if city council had it. As well.
Sure. So to be clear on timing, so just one clarification on timing, that Foundry PUD was adopted and approved prior to development of the Small Area Plan. So from a, from a timing perspective, that approval was kind of already in the books. So that policy came in later and so really the applicant at this point is responding. You know, this GDP doesn't include a, you know, it doesn't include a requirement to lower the heights down to one story. Again, it has that thirty foot provision, but through. The PUD process, because that policy's in place, you know, we'll certainly look to that when we evaluate the final building design.
Your current PUD, that was approved. Is lapped, is lapped, right?
The current PUD has lapsed. It would need to come back through public hearings to be reauthorized for building permits.
Okay, so any approval from Bill, uh, planning or city council is, I guess, not really in force.
No, it would not. It, it basically, I mean, it has that PUD, but it would have to go through a public hearing process again before. We couldn't issue building permits on it, basically.
Then it just in terms of the conceptual site plan that was shared, is that in any way attached or referenceable into the GDP?
It's not. It's part of our application materials and the applicant can speak around, I think, how, you know. How intense they are around building that, but there's, no PUDs in the future would be weighed against the fact that that concept plan was shown in the GDP application. Unless the planning commission wants to take some of the development standards or other things, they would need to be shown on the GDP sheet itself.
And then in terms of the concurrency requirements, I guess with the PUD lapsing. Does that mean, well, the GDP.
Yeah, that's a really good question. It's actually, the concurrency requirements were embedded within. The resolution of approval for the PUD and plat. So it's not a note on the PUD, it's not a subdivision agreement. It's actually that was. Tied to, you know, that previous PUD's specific approval. That being said, you know, fiscal policy for the city within the comprehensive plan. You know, requires the positive fiscal performance. That being said, you know, fiscal policy for the city within the comprehensive plan, you know, requires the positive fiscal performance. And the city is, you know, a number of recent approvals over the past few years have established some sort of concurrency requirement. And so, you know, staff and the applicant both felt that just embedding that as a note on the GDP to make it abundantly clear kind of at the outset, rather than waiting till PUD, I think was, you know, kind of the most enforceable mechanism over time, long-term with that. You know, that being said, when the applicant comes forth with the PUD, you know, if, if the numbers need to shift around, you know, it would require probably a GDP amendment to tweak that concurrency requirement in the future. But basically, that requirement now would run with the land rather than embedded in a PUD-specific document.
And can you share your screen again and with the, share the, the language that we're, we're looking at tonight?
Yeah, let me pull that up. I don't have that on my PowerPoint. So one second. I also wanted to get with you on height real quick. So I have the, the PUD for the Foundry pulled up. So while I'm doing this, just to be clear. So the, the previous, so on the previous PUD, the building E, which is that northern commercial building, the inline, that is shown at roughly 28 foot six. And let's see, let me get to the others. The larger foundry building is right at 35 feet. And the residential units are again, right at that 35-foot height limit. Comparison there. All right. So let me get the language here. Zoom in. So you all can see this and show my screen. So I just want to be clear too, you know, I think staff acknowledges that this concurrency language was drafted at the pretty last minute. So we may be tweaking this with the applicant, you know, prior to going to City Council, but really, that's the intent. And so I don't know if you all can see here on the screen, it's this note six. And I'm happy to read it, but basically. Hi, yeah, let me try and do, here we go. Yeah, there we go. We're getting better. All right. So right here, this note six, is that large enough? Okay. Okay. Any questions on that language?
There's really no, no mention of the letters of intent with regard to, yeah.
Yeah. No, so there is no requirement. There's no tie to any letters of intent or leasing. It's really, again, tied to, you know, actual core and shell commercial construction. And so really, I think the applicant can speak more to, you know, this is their, this is not a condition of approval. You know, this was, this was their ask. We did work on the language together, you know, just to make sure that we thought it was something that was enforceable and would result in commercial construction. But you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't get to actual lease rates and things like that.
Additional questions of staff? Seeing none at this time, we'd invite the applicant to start with your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Brian Bear, 7552 North 83rd Street in Longmont. I've got with Mass Equities, got some other folks on the call here that I just wanted to note. Drew Sobel is on, my business partner. He lives in Evergreen. And we've got our architect from Boulder, Dan Rotner, and Chris McGrannahan from, from our traffic engineering company. I think that's everybody I see from, from my side on there and, and certainly all are available for questions if, if you have any. Thank you for your time tonight. Wanted to be, try to be brief and not try to be redundant to what Lisa went through. But I do have some slides I wanted to show you, and I really wanted to accomplish four things. One is I want to introduce who we are, Mass Equities and, and what we do. I want to talk a little bit about our general direction of the plan. I realize this is not the PUD, this is the GDP, but we spent a lot of time thinking through what we want to do here and also talking with local stakeholders and neighbors and, and planners, just trying to get a sense of the direction. And Lisa showed you a little bit of that. Wanted to add a little bit more to that. And then I also wanted to talk about that process we went through and of discovery. And, and that involves both, you know, the residential piece and the commercial piece. And then just, just open it up for question and answer. So I'll try to be brief and be available for questions. And I think I just share my screen and go right to the presentation. Is that how it's done?
It should work. Yep. We'll let you know here once the screen pops up. There we go. Yeah, that's great.
Great, great. Let's see if I can get this thing to advance here. Here we go. Great. Just real quick about.
You may be, well, let's see. So it's a PDF. You may be able to make it larger for us.
Is that better?
Yeah, well, it cuts off the bottom of the deck there.
Yeah, 75. Is that a little better?
Yeah, that works. Yep.
Okay, great. I'll just pageinate it through. Just a little bit about us. We're, we're a local developer. We're headquartered in Niwot. I've been back in Colorado for over 20 years. Went to school here in the eighties. And been developing up and down the front range. My business partner Drew Sobel also is here, lives in Evergreen. But we have operations here in Colorado, also Las Vegas, and a little bit of more legacy stuff in projects in Southern California. But our focus is, is mainly Colorado and Las Vegas. We've done over 200 million of projects and community, what I would call community investment in different areas along the front range. And that's over 25 projects. Just some, some pictures here of some projects we've done. Greeley, Downtown Loveland, Downtown Longmont. And really, where we focus this, the residential part of our business is really just looking at the different communities and what they need. And then, and then putting together a plan for those areas. And sometimes it's just residential, sometimes it's mixed use. We also do some commercial development. I wanted to take, Lisa talked a little bit about the density in the area. I wanted to sort of just go up a little higher and talk more about sort of context of the area. Because that's something that we study as well, sort of looking what's around us, not just adjacent in the same, you know, metro district or HOA, but what's really around us on, on, you know, really, in this case, all three sides could start to get into Lafayette to the north. But it is a really mixed bag here of different types of, of development, ranging from condos to single family, as Lisa mentioned, and, and a lot of different densities. And so just wanted to point that out because we sort of are looking at that as, we have somewhat of a unique site because we're right at the, the main intersection. But as we started thinking through our plan of what we would do and how we would set it up, a lot of it was informed by what's around us. And then also, of course, the, the work that we did with the neighbors to, to find out, you know, what, what the west side of our plant looked like versus the east side. Because, you know, very different treatments. One is a highway, one is a pretty established neighborhood. So when we looked at it, we looked at a little higher level of not only density, but different types of uses that are surrounding us. And, and we're sort of, I think if you look at this greater area, I think your densities are running around an average of about 10 to 12 units per acre, and that's just about where we are. This is the plan that Lisa showed you. I wanted to give you a little more insight to sort of our thinking and how this has evolved. The, we, we look at it really as, as the sort of tale of two sides, but they're integrated with the commercial core. And it's really a smaller format neighborhood commercial core. But as you can see on the left side of the screen, the blue, the blue residential units, housing units are, the direction we're headed are paired homes. And that was really a function of feedback from the community and particularly the, the neighborhood directly adjacent to us on the west side. Originally, when we came in, just so you know, we had some other concepts. We had row houses there. We had fourplexes and some sixplexes. And after talking with the neighbors and the community, that wasn't what they wanted there. They wanted more of this, of a similar character that was with the lanterns or with the patio homes around the park. And so this is actually more, this, what you're seeing here is actually the fourth generation of our plan. And as a result of working with staff and working with the community, just to get a direction that, that, that people could get behind and were excited about and that fit with the neighborhood. On the east side of what we'll call the Spine Road in the middle, that's where we took the old, the, well, the current GDP and PUD. And we sort of changed it a little bit. We created more of a, I'll call it a little town center, although this is, you know, not a, not a large amount of commercial. But more of a nucleus to the project with a plaza, outdoor areas that connect to the park. And, and we're, we're committed to this design because we think this is what it's going to take to create that special place in this neighborhood. We've got the two gray buildings that are sort of flanking that sort of town square concept. Those are the commercial buildings. And then to the north of that are some townhomes or slash row homes that would be two stories. And then to the south is, is the same type of product in the ground. And everything on the site's two stories. And then as Lisa mentioned, we came back this week with the concurrency provision so that we can make sure and that the community and the city can make sure that, that this, this commercial does get built. And as I mentioned, we're, we're ending up at about 10 units per acre. Just to drill in a little further and just to show you a little more context, again, I realize this is not PUD. This is, this is GDP. But I wanted to, you know, we want to show people what we're thinking and where we're headed. And this was this type of stuff that we showed in the community meetings. But, you know, when you get to the, you get to the general direction and, and where we're headed, it's sort of more traditional architecture. We know that across the street, we do have some sort of traditional with, kind of mixed with the sort of more modern with some shed roofs and things like that. There's also masonry or stone at the base. And, and so those are the types of things that we're going to bring into the design when we get to that PUD phase. Also, the commercial, our concept there is, is, you know, it's similar to the Old Town feel. That's the, the, you know, we want it to be a very neighborhood, local feel where people want to come and gather. So that's the direction with storefronts. And, you know, we like the outdoor areas and, you know, we've, we just did a project and we continue to do this large project in downtown Longmont. And we're creating a lot of that sort of outdoor areas where people can gather in storefronts and things like that. And, you know, make it pedestrian friendly. And we're, we're committed to that. And that'll be, that'll show up as we start to move into the, the PUD. There's been a lot of discussion and I know comments and feedback about traffic in the neighborhood impacts. And, you know, as Lisa mentioned, our GDP produces, will produce a big, a lot less traffic impact than the current GDP, about 40-plus percent less daily trips. And that's at the top level of our GDP. So that's at the maximum buildout of our GDP. So this will have a lot less impact on the neighborhood. And this was also a big discussion when we talked to the neighbors. It'll put less pressure on the local roads as well. And we're proposing, as Lisa showed, a one-way in off Calix, which was important to those neighbors right next to us because they didn't want to see headlights and they wanted to sort of reduce that traffic and that the cars up and down Calix. And so we're accommodating that with a proposed one-way. And I say proposed because we still have to get it approved by the city. But we're committed to that in our plan. And staff and CDOT have reviewed our overall plan. And we're actually have a access permit for out on the highway that's pending with CDOT right now. Each residential unit will have two parking spaces and a garage. And again, that's feedback from the neighborhood that they wanted to make sure that everybody had a covered, covered parking and keep the cars off the street. We also will provide guest parking and make that available for both the commercial and the residential. And then our plan is, because we have, we have a significant land size here with six acres, is to provide, you know, ample parking for commercial so that doesn't spill into the neighborhoods and it doesn't spill into the residential and can stand on its own. So just in general, when we look at the plan, we believe that it, it's going to have a lot less impact on the surrounding neighborhood than, than what was, what was approved prior. A little bit about the community and neighborhood engagement that we processed, that we went through. And we realize this is an ongoing process, but we wanted to get out in front of it for the, with the GDP to engage the neighborhood. And so in the summer of 2020, we started a process where we engaged the HOA leadership to talk about the general direction we were headed. That, we had three or four meetings with them and various phone calls and email feedback. That helped to shape the plan. Then once we had a plan that the HOA leadership thought was ready to present to the community, we hosted community meetings. And it was a little bit challenging because it's during COVID. So we hosted them in the park. And that was actually very successful. We had over 60 people attend our presentations. And for those of you, well, there's folks on the call here, but we thought it was well-attended. We thought it was productive. It was, there was a lot of good feedback. And, and so after those meetings, we broke down the feedback. And, and I wanted to show you some of the progress that we made, which I believe was a really, very positive collective effort with staff, us and the, and the neighbors. The first thing, and these are the major issues that came up that, and, and what we did about them. The first thing was, when we talked about the commercial, it was pretty clear that the neighborhood did not want any drive-through. And for a number of reasons, timing on that, type of tenant, things like that were some of the reasons. So we agreed, we will prohibit drive-throughs going forward. There was a lot of talk, as I mentioned in the prior slide, about traffic congestion, traffic and congestion concerns. And some of that was related to commercial. Some of that was just related to, to general activity on the site. But as you, as you folks know from seeing a lot of traffic studies, commercial generates a lot more traffic than residential. And so we reduced, it was consistent with our plan to reduce the commercial within this, within this development. Also, the access on Calix, I talked about that before. There was concerns with the adjacent neighbors in the patio homes about headlights and traffic. So we think that by turning that into a one-way in configuration, that relieves a lot of that. So again, just responding to the neighborhood. The height, even though the current plan is three stories, it just, it wasn't resonating with the community. Some of those folks were there when it was approved before. Some of them have bought homes since. And we heard from many people, I wouldn't say all by any stretch, but many people that they wanted to see this go to two-story across the board. And so we accommodated that. We revised the plan and brought it down to two stories. I mentioned along Calix, trying to create compatibility with the neighbors to the west in the patio homes. And they were really, and it was very productive, I think. They were big drivers of these paired homes that would face the park on Calix. And so we discussed that and brought a new plan forward. And then we're committed to, to doing that in our, in our design going forward. We think it's actually a really nice product and will be a real benefit to the area. And then we will keep our townhomes out on Highway 42, which then really provides a nice mix of product. And then basements. This was an interesting one that sort of evolved over the time that was really tied to, kind of tied to, to cars and just impact. And, and the, the, the observations that were made were, you know, if, if you don't give people two-car garages at a minimum, they start to park cars out on the street. And, and so how can we provide more storage and more room? So one of the answers was bringing basements. And those work actually really well for the paired homes as well. So we're committed to, to go that direction as we bring that design in later. And again, as part of the PUD. So I, I think a lot of good work here with, with, with the neighbors. I know there's always more, but these are the top, the top issues that we saw through 60 people attending and emails and, and things like that. So I wanted you to understand that we're very focused on this. We want to make sure that building, we're building a product and a project that is compatible and is, and works for the community. I want to talk a little bit about commercial market data because this is important to us. Um, I want to talk a little bit about commercial market data because this is important to us and also can give you some insight as to what our thinking is of why we are proposing 15,000 feet of commercial. I, a- as you know, the, the city of Louisville did a McCaslin commercial study a couple of years ago. And, and we, we went through it and it was kind of interesting because to read that study and then to also know what happened in 2020 with COVID, um, there's a lot of interesting data points. And I think there've been some, some comments, I think in the last, uh, file, uh, the last presentation a couple before us about, you know, the state of commercial in Louisville. And it's no secret that there's, there's a lot of vacancy, um, across the board. And, uh, you know, the question is how and when does that fill up? But, uh, that is a big issue and we're, we're seeing a, 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 um, a trend over the last few years that, you know, is not very good when it comes to commercial. And that's the hockey stick there off to the right, um, with the large increases in, in, uh, in vacancy. So that's a concern for us as we start to get over our 15,000 feet. We think the 15,000 feet is geared toward neighborhood serving and we can do that. Um, it's, we think it's going to take a little bit of time, but we think that as we build the residential units and, and, uh, and, and really make an effort to, to get out and beat the bushes for tenants that could come in here, uh, we think it will be successful, but we believe there's a ceiling on that. Um, this is pretty detailed slide and I'm happy to share it with you. But basically we took a, a, a deeper dive in, uh, based on the last, you know, six to 12 months. And we started to break down the different uses and different types of retail, freestanding, inline office, and did a fairly deep dive as to where's the vacancy and, and why. And, uh, as I mentioned, there's, there's a large amount of vacancy if you look at this stat snapshot. And then we also started to dig up the pipeline of what are some of the potential projects that could get built in the future? And there's a significant amount of that in the pipeline. So again, just things that, uh, concern us and, and direct us when we look at how much retail is viable and how much commercial is viable. Cause the last thing anybody wants is empty commercial that sits there out in front of a beautiful community. So we want to make sure we're, we're being prudent about how we do it and, um, and the types of uses that come in there. Um, so my last slide here is just really a summary of everything I talked about. Um, you know, uh, we, we, we feel like we, uh, have for this, this portion of what we're doing, the GDP, we've engaged the neighbors and stakeholders and we have a, we have a direction that fits with the market and the surrounding community. We understand that during the PUD, we'll be doing more of that because then it, it really comes to life. But at this stage, we feel good about that process. Uh, we think this plan that we've put forward, it will have less impact than the current GDP, uh, and PUD that stands today. And that's something that we heard over and over from the community. Um, the residential density is consistent with the surrounding area and city planning efforts. Um, as I mentioned, the traffic will be way down over the current, uh, program. Um, and I think more importantly than anything, my last bullet here is if, uh, this, this, this direction will bring, uh, neighborhood serving commercial that, that almost everybody in the community wants. Um, and, and also new attached single-family housing in Louisville. And I think that's something that I, I hope we all agree that is very needed. Uh, we need a diversity of housing, um, and this is, uh, can, can help chip away at that need. So, um, thank you very much for your time and, um, really I'm here to answer any questions or, uh, anything else you need.
Thank you for the presentation. At this time, I would open up for Commissioner Questions of the applicant, Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, Brian, I wanted to give you a chance to, uh, comment. A lot of the feedback we got from residents, uh, was about the, uh, the dirt pile and the dirt pile that's covered with some five-foot weeds. Um, I guess from your perspective, what, what is, what's the story with the dirt pile? And I guess Lisa, if you want to chime in as well, um, in terms of what the city's been involved in with that regard.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you what I know. Um, you know, we don't own the property. So, um, we're, we have it under contract to, to go forward if it, if we get our approval. So I think the current, the current owner, uh, which I don't know if they're on the call, but they placed that dirt there in anticipation of, of a future development.
Yeah, sure. So Commissioner Deal, that's correct. This, this particular applicant, you know, Mass Equities, um, is not an owner group and they're relatively new to given kind of the lifespan of the work there. Um, basically the dirt pile was authorized through a stormwater permit, kind of inconsistent with how we now allow folks to store and stockpile dirt on properties prior to approval of, you know, PUDs and kind of finalization of agreements and things like that. So, you know, based on, um, you know, some negative consequences that have occurred over the past few years. We, we don't currently allow property owners to do that anymore moving forward. That being said, you know, the dirt pile's there now and, um, you know, redevelopment obviously would, would, you know, remove that. Um, you know, in the long term.
Yeah, thank you. I'll let somebody else go if, um, they want.
Is it okay if I go?
Please.
I, I just have one question, which is, you know, recognizing now as you presented and as staff presented that we're in the GDP stage, I, I, it would be helpful to me just to hear how those community engagement efforts are going to go forward as you move from a GDP to the, to the PUD stage and starting to flesh this out a little more. Um, sort of what specifically is that going to look like?
Yeah, thank you. Good question. Uh, we would just continue with the process that we have been going with. We have a mailing list and a group of, as I mentioned, over 60 people from the local community that we sort of keep, stay in touch with and through the HOA, the various HOAs. So as we get past this project and we start to get into bringing the project to life and vertical elements, we would, we would present those to the community as well and, uh, in a charrette-type format and, um, take feedback and tinker with it, uh, until we believe we've got it to a point where it, it's being supported and then bring it back in.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Williams.
You, you caught me before I even put my hand up. Um, so I'm just wondering, uh, what kind of commercial do you plan on having, um, in, uh, building ENF?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. Um, we'd love to have what everybody's been talking about in our community meetings, which is restaurant, neighborhood serving, coffee, ice cream, things like that. So we, we're making a big effort to go after that food and beverage type of a tenant. But, um, there's also some, some community services that could be valuable as well. So, um, but our, our main focus will be, you know, we're set, if you look at kind of how we set up those two buildings, we see this outdoor area, sort of outdoor dining and plaza area that sort of connects, you know, sort of over to the park. And so those are the types of tenants that we will go after and pursue. And as I've said all along, I wish I could guarantee different types of tenants, but unfortunately it just can't do that. But if we, if we set this up right and we build it and we show everybody the dream, we think we can capture those types of tenants, uh, in the, in these, in these buildings.
Okay. And so, um, I also have a question around traffic and, um, the things that you did to mitigate, um, uh, the number of trips and traffic, uh, around, all the way around, um, this development. I was wondering if you engaged, um, the, uh, people that live on Summit View Drive and how that kind of transpired to be, um, uh, probably the bulk of the in and out and traffic, um, for your development.
Um, are you speaking of the, the Summit View where it connects to highway 42?
Uh, Summit View Drive, yes.
Right. So just, you're just in a general comment about traffic on Summit View Drive?
Well, and I'm just wondering, um, how you decided that, what, what parts of the development was going to get more traffic than others? Why didn't you, uh, look at, um, all the different, uh, egress, ingress areas and kind of, um, make that more, um, even? What, what was your, can take me through your process?
Right, right, okay.
Who were you talking to and how did you determine that you were, um, going to mitigate Calix? And, um, just give, give me a little bit more background.
Sure, yeah, sure. No, I understand. Um, we, we basically took the framework that was already there for the current GDP and PUD. We think that those control points actually work pretty well. So we think the, the line share of the, of the traffic will, uh, will be at the access point to the commercial from highway 42. And that's where we think most of the commercial traffic will sort of come and go. And so we tried to, that's again, why we pushed that commercial up into that quadrant, into that area of the, of the project. Um, the south access on Summit View was not changed from the prior. It, we think it works well because it's a full movement, which also would let people come out to the south and go left out to, or go east out to 42 and, and, and sort of keep them, you know, out of, off Calix as well and, and which would then invite people to go deeper into the neighborhood. So, and then the north access again is, is basically in the same location as the prior plan because that gives a right out to the east to get back to highway 42 as well and to go north. So we think the, the line share of the traffic for the commercial happens at the main, uh, access point of 42. And then secondary to that are going to be Pascal to the north, heading out to highway 42. And I think there'll be some people that will use Summit View, but they can't go north there. You can only go south because of the pork chop. So I think that's going to be just limiting and, and, uh, and I think our traffic study shows that. So that, that was the thinking there. And then to your question about Calix, uh, that was a lot of just the neighborhood feedback. And I think some of the neighbors were, uh, the patio homes on the park. And I think some could have possibly been Summit View that said, look, we just don't want headlights. We don't want people exiting the site on Calix because then that'll send them south down to Summit View. Um, so let's limit that and can, can you do a, what, uh, a, a, a one-way in only at that, at that access point? So that's, that's kind of the thinking of the four points of how we got there and how we think they'll be used.
Okay, so, uh, I don't know if I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong, but, um, isn't, uh, the, um, Summit View Drive and Colorado, Colorado highway 42 a three-quarter movement, not a full?
Right, it, that's, that's, yeah, you can't.
Okay, so you could make the left out.
Right, you can't go north there, yeah.
It's right in, right out. Um, and there's no light, but the light is at Pascal. So I would think that you would want to utilize the light more than anything else, just because it's very frustrating for, um, your development, for people to get into it. Um, and so I'm just wondering, you know, why?
Yeah, the north, the northbound traffic, the northbound traffic, uh, will use the, the light as you, as you said. And also that will be a way to exit and go northbound. So we think, again, we think the line share of the traffic is going to be in at highway 42 at our main entrance. Then the next one will be Pascal. And then we think Summit View will be the third, the third choice.
And I don't know if it's helpful while we're talking about this, but, um, I'm looking at, uh, figure two and that's why I keep looking back and forth, um, because I'm seeing the number of trips and, um, all the, 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 um, transportation layout for this development. Um, uh, anyhow, um, so thank you for the questions or the answers of all my questions. Um, um, I, I'm, I will have a few more, but I'll let others take the, the next question.
Yeah, you, you said you were looking at figure two, that I just, I just pulled that, okay. Yeah, a little bit, it's, it's somewhat misleading just because it shows the arrows in and not the arrows out. But, um, I, I'm looking at that one as well.
Right, that's what I'm going off of here. But it might be helpful to put it up, I don't know.
Yeah, if you, if you have more questions on, I'd be happy to. I, yeah, as I, as I look at it, it just shows the arrows going in, which, uh, you know, all of these with the exception of Calix should have arrows going out.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'll let some, someone else ask a question.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, Brian, with regard to the concurrency requirements, um, as you know, in the history of the property, right? Uh, the city council approved, obviously the planning commission approved. These concurrency requirements that had the letter of intent is an important part of that process. And obviously that's not part of what, uh, is being proposed with your application. So I, I guess a concern would be like your reaction that, you know, the, uh, without a letter of intent, if I understand it correctly, that the, the shell could be developed for the, the commercial. Um, and then you could obviously commence on all the residential and what's to say that that commercial just sits vacant?
Yeah, that's a great question. Uh, and a concern of ours too, uh, we think, and that's why we broke it up into two pieces. Um, so we think that, uh, we can fill the first half of that and we track, we'll, we'll track that with the, the, uh, the paired homes, uh, basically because that's 60% of the project. So we feel, we feel good about that and we think we can fill that with the types of tenants that we're talking about. Can't guarantee it, but I think that's a reasonable approach for 7,500 square feet, uh, in that location with that visibility. So, um, but, uh, I, I can't, I, I can't predict who would go in there. Um, and the way that commercial works, and I've been doing this for over 20 years, is, uh, until you build the building, it's, it's, it's very challenging to get people to commit, might get an LLI. But once that shell starts to go up and that steel or that wood starts coming out of the ground, you, that's when you start to get activity. So, um, so we like that profile of getting that 7,500 going first and, um, uh, or concurrent with, with some of the units and, and get that filled, um, early on and then roll to the second piece, which would be, uh, for some reason I'm seeing it north to south, but it doesn't necessarily have to go that way.
Okay. Um, and maybe this is a question for Lisa. I don't, there's not a single commercial property on any of Dakota, right? It's all residential.
Um, so within the portions that I showed you, those are all, the remaining properties are all residential. There is a small bit of commercial within the Kestrel portion of Dakota. So there is a commercial pad site, um, within that one, but there's no concurrency requirement, um, associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
There was a significant amount of horse trading that went on, uh, particularly as it related to the number of units and the, uh, 55 and older requirements, uh, for the housing. What would it take to bring some of that back?
As we said in the community meetings, it's, it's not out of the question, but we, our goal is to, to do, create a more inclusive, uh, offering here of, of, of housing that has the paired homes and the townhomes and not restrict the type of demographic that's going to live there. Uh, we think that's just a higher chance of success and to create, uh, just more vibrancy in the area. So, uh, that's the direction we prefer to go is to, to, is to, is to release that restriction.
Have any additional questions of the applicant at this time? All right, um, it is 8:38 right now. I think we'll take a quick, a five-minute break and then when we come back, we're going to open up public comment. So if we can, uh, go ahead and we'll take five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Certainly, thank you.
All right, thank you all for rejoining. We will go ahead and open public comment at this point in time. And actually, I'd like to do that by starting with a motion to enter Addendums One, Two, and Three into the record.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second?
All right, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, they are entered. With that, then, we are going to be requesting that the speakers, limit yourselves to no more than three minutes. There will be no aggregating of time. So, if you'd like to speak, you have three minutes. And if you'll begin by clearly stating your full name and address, please. We will kind of be working as a team here to figure out who has their hand raised. So, again, if you can use the hand raise function at the bottom of the screen, that'll, if you hover over, you'll see that ability there. Or, I don't think we have any phone only, do we?
Um, I do think there's one by phone, so that would be a star nine.
Phone star nine, yep. Thank you. Jumping around here then, I see Mark Thompson, and we'll have a next in line would be Gary Larson. So, Mark, if you can, we, we will unmute you, but then also make sure you're not kind of double muted there.
Okay.
Great.
My full name is Christopher Mark Thompson. I go by Mark, and that's how most people around here know me. And I'm a homeowner and resident at 782 Tree Street. It's in the Steel Ranch neighborhood. My wife and I have been impressed with responsiveness of the Mass Equities folks, to the feedback provided by many individuals in our neighborhood. Their team has politely listened to our concerns and suggestions, and as a result, they've made a number of modifications to the original plan. I know you're aware of most of these after tonight's meeting, but examples include decreasing the maximum building height, eliminating a drive-through restaurant option, modifying road ingress egress, projecting many fewer daily vehicle trips, and increasing the availability of off-street parking for the residents. This plot of land was zoned for commercial slash residential, when we and our Steel Ranch neighbors purchased here. And, and my wife and I anticipated building taking place there years ago. Honestly, at one point, an earlier developer began moving dirt, presumably in preparation for the building, but then abandoned the project, leaving a very unsightly mini mountain of dirt, which I know we've also already talked about, now largely weed cover. While some have actually shared that they quote-unquote "love" that pile of dirt, we most definitely do not. We've been hearing those who believe the property should have a 55 and older restriction, but it's not clear to us why. I'm not aware of any other residential properties within Steel Ranch, Dakota that had that restriction. We personally like having a mix of younger families, single adults, and older couples. So, we're really not sure what the purpose that would be. But regardless, we're very much in favor of the Seventh Amendment to the Foundry Plan, and we fully support this project moving forward.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And we, at this point, we have, okay, great, Gary Larson is next, and then Usha will be after Gary Larson. Please go ahead, we will unmute you, Mr. Blair.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Gary Larson. I live at 2189 Park Lane. I'm directly across from Calix, so I'm going to be looking out at this development for the rest of my life. I was involved in leading the community to get the original foundry approval back in 2016. I tried to share my knowledge of that. Actually, I was actually called to ask to get together in a group with Brian and his group, as I am president of the Dakota Metro District. And in those first three meetings, I started, I, I offered a lot of input on what I had learned from working with the city and planning commission, and getting the original foundry approved. I felt that I wasn't listened to, and that ME was pushing their concept. In terms of density, my proposal is to just go with the 34 main floor master duplexes or paired homes. That would result in a DU per acre of 5.88, which is perfectly compatible with the 5.5 of the Steel Ranch number one patio homes where I live, and also the 6.3 rating DU per acre of lanterns, which is the paired homes right next to us. It would be very compatible. Demographics, Mark just brought it up. I did a survey of the 38 homes in Phase One. Mark is in Phase Two, which is about a quarter mile east of here, and others, of course. In the 38 patio homes that are right across the street, I got a response from 25 people. 70% wanted empty nester housing. We're talking about aiming the construction towards demographics. We, we had a 55-plus years ago with the foundry. That's not being proposed here. Instead, we're proposing that we have empty nester housing, which is needed in the city. As a matter of fact, the last time this got approved, that led to the age restriction, all six council members, including Mayor Stolzmann, wanted the 55 age restrictions. As a matter of fact, Ashley wanted it to be 100%. We would be happy to have empty nester housing targeted towards getting empty nesters and disabled people in this group. 20% of the 462 homes in Steel Ranch have main floor master. That's only 20%. And we think that the city of Lewisville needs more main floor housing like that to maintain residents of Lewisville, so they don't have to move elsewhere. Rentals, 100% of the survey said we don't want rental units. In September, in one of the meetings, Mass Equity said that, quote, "we will keep a block of units to rent out," unquote. Commercial, subject, we'd like to see more commercial, I would like to see more commercial, comparable to what the original foundry was, to lower property taxes, and attract a destination restaurant in that location, which I think would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And after Usha, we do not have anybody else with their hands raised. We can go ahead. We will, there we go, you're unmuted now. If you can begin with your full name and address, please.
Usha Berry, 1173 Summit View, and that's directly across from this project at the corner of Summit View and Calix. And I appreciate the developer being responsive to community members. I definitely believe this GDP-to-be improvement over the original one. My only concern is in line with what Commissioner Williams had mentioned, and I mentioned it in the community meetings as well. I agree with Mr. Blair that the one-way on Calix was requested by the community, but I definitely still am concerned about the traffic on Summit View, as Commissioner Williams had mentioned. That intersection where there's no light is already quite nerve-wracking, especially as there are a number of elderly people who live on the, in the lanterns development. And it's, it's hard to get in and out of there as it is, especially during rush hour. There's a lot of traffic on baseline, heading north and south, and to make that turn is, and now we're going to definitely increase the amount of traffic coming in there. There's townhomes where people be living right off of there, and then entrance into that neighborhood. So, although I don't have a solution, I just wanted to say that I heard Commissioner Williams, I think she's right on the money in terms of, there is still a problem there in terms of traffic. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. We have Jeff Gass, who has raised your hand. We will be unmuting you here momentarily.
Hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Jeffrey Gass, 784 Meadowmark Lane. I'm in Phase Two of the Steel Ranch project, which is west of the proposed property. First of all, I'd like to thank Mass Equities, Brian and Andrew, and the rest of the team for their transparency throughout this whole project. To emphasize about the age restriction, the common saying Boulder Valley School Districts can handle a few more students that live in the development. Economics and price point, I think, will determine how many families move into the development, as we can see by our Steel Ranch patio homes. Out of 68 homes, I can only think of two homes that are owned by families with school-age children or younger. We do have two or three units that are rented that have school-age children, so I don't think that's an issue whatsoever about making it age-restricted at this time. We're in the year 2021, we're not in the year 2016, so economics and variables have changed. 75,000 square feet is excessive. We have so many empties in, within one mile of this proposed development. So, reducing the amount of the commercial and adding residential can only help fill these 15,000 square feet, plus the neighboring strip malls that have tons of empty storefronts right now. So, hopefully, by more residents, it'll bring sales tax to the city as opposed to an empty lot and vacant stores right now. With the new law that was passed with Gallagher, I think the formula of residential, commercial doesn't apply as much anymore, but I'm not totally sure about that. There's something I would look into further. Again, while they're listening, Mass Equities by the community was, showed how dedicated and they want to be great neighborhood, in the neighborhood with us. As to the traffic, baseline has no effect on this development whatsoever. The traffic line on Pascal and State Route 42 would be the only real egress for anyone heading north, getting out onto, going on Colorado Road 42 South. They'd be able to go through the commercial right in the center of the development to make a right turn to head south on Colorado 42. If people go out on Summit, the only people, most likely, they're going to go to the left to get out of the Colorado 42, and going to the right would only really lend people that live in the neighborhood to go home that way. So, I don't think we have, with all the changes made with the one-way in on Calix, I think that alleviates a lot of the traffic problems also. All in all, I just want to say thank you to Brian and the team. They've listened, they've made a lot of changes. I look forward to continuing this process as we go forward. Thank you very much.
And thank you for your participation. Appreciate that. I just want to double-check back in. Usha, you have your hand raised. I'm not sure if that was, was that just leftover from previously? Your microphone is unmuted right now.
No, I just wanted to make a clarification. I know when I spoke, I said baseline, and I, I just completely misspoke, so I think that's what he was addressing. I was talking about, actually, the turn from Highway 42 or 95th, whatever it's called right there, onto Summit View. And so, I know he just addressed baseline, but that was just me misspeaking. The, the concern I have is from 95th or Highway 42, whatever it's called right there, onto Summit View.
Great, thank you for your clarification. Appreciate it. We, we do not have any additional hands raised at this time.
That's correct. I see no other hands raised right now.
All right, thank you for confirming that.
So, just to be clear, Mr. Gary Larson's hand is now raised. I don't know if he has someone else in the householder.
Okay, thanks. Why don't we go ahead and, okay, there we go. Yeah, why don't we unmute? Mr. Larson, did you have something?
Yeah, just a little clarification. So, Phase Two of the patio homes is 30 patio homes that are west of us here, that are on Steel Ranch Park, looking directly at the project. In the letters that you've received, you'll find out that there are, from the homeowners in this area, 27 of the homeowners are against this proposal. Those are all primarily people that live in the patio homes here and on Summit View. And we feel that we're the ones that are going to be most impacted by this. The, there are eight for the proposal. Seven of those live more than a quarter mile away to the west, and they're the ones that don't like the mountain. We actually like the dirt mountain here, because it cuts down the traffic noise until such time as we do get something built there. So, I just wanted to clarify that, if it won't be obvious from the letters that you're receiving with comments.
All right, thank you. Moving then, at this time, Mr. Gass?
Hand raised, Jeff Gass.
Yeah, you've also already spoken. Do you have something, a different person there who would like to speak? Or, we'll go ahead and unmute you, and?
Mr. Gass, you'll have to, there you go.
Okay. Now, again, a clarification. Even though we're in Phase Two in the west side, we all signed up in 2012 and 2011 when we bought our homes, that the property in question was all commercial. So, I don't think, I don't- So I, I don't think, I don't think where we live within the Steel Ranch has any bearing whatsoever with us for or against this property. We all signed up in two thousand and twelve by signing on the dotted line, all the original homeowners, that that was all commercial before the foundry change in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment as well, and uh, we will then, this time I'm not seeing any uh new hands raised.
No new hands.
Okay. Um, then I would invite the applicant for response and closing statement.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if there's anything specific I needed to respond to that I didn't cover in my presentation unless somebody feels differently about that, but I just wanted to go back to sort of, you know, my summary slide, which is uh, you know, the work that we've done with the community, the concessions and the changes. I don't even want to call them concessions because a lot of them were really good ideas that we've made to make this uh the direction of the development uh work for the community and uh, and work for us. And so at the end of the day, I think it is a win-win. And also to bring more housing and new housing to Louisville, I think is very important. So we're excited to try to move this forward in the, in the format that we've proposed in the GDP, and uh, and we look forward to the next steps.
Do we have any additional Commissioner questions or final questions of the applicant at this time? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate that. And then a staff response and closing statement, please.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to address Commissioner Williams, I guess, concerns related to traffic. So um, you know, we did, we did work with the applicant. The numbers that you saw on figure two are assumption numbers, right? So they're just given kind of general traffic patterns in the area where the traffic engineer, you know, believes that those traffic orientations are coming from, and really the arrow was just intended to indicate the intersection, not actual flow of traffic. So my apologies on the confusion there. We'll make sure that that's more clear um the next time around on that. Um, but their traffic engineer is on the call. Staff did work with them on those assumptions, but really those are predictions. And so a lot of that can be, um, you know, you know, is, is not a set number, but just really based around where we think traffic will access and go. Um, but Steph, you know, generally agreed with those assumptions. Um, beyond that, um, I don't have anything further to add other than just, you know, to reiterate the change that came in in the last minute on the currency and um that we find that the housing policy um within the comprehensive plan and the density that is proposed is consistent and compatible with neighborhood. Happy to answer any other questions you may have, though.
Can I ask you to speak to the age restrictions uh and kind of where you feel the city has gone? Uh, you know, with the inclusionary housing policy, as you've already spoken to, but um uh, because this was a significant issue previously.
Sure, certainly. So, you know, I, I do have to caveat this was, I was not staff at the time, you know, so I wasn't here and privy to, you know, kind of all of the context around all of the specific cut, you know, discussion. But I did review the entire record for the previous approvals. And so I think it was twofold. I think, you know, a number of years ago, uh, there was more significant concern around potential school overcrowding, particularly in these feeder schools as a response to a lot of the new residential development within the Steel Ranch neighborhood. So some of the absorption within those local schools was reaching capacity, if not even a little over. And so I think part of the component to enact that was due to um, due to concern for school overcrowding. Um, if you look, however, at our census and demographic trends, you know, Louisville is continuing generally, um, you know, collectively to age over time, um, we have fewer, um, the cohort, or I guess the average age is increasing. And so therefore, our school enrollment for our feeder schools um is less than it had been um, you know, a number of years ago, five years ago or so. Um, and so, you know, that is one of the components that was considered. The other one, though, is, you know, in, in, in my understanding, you know, fairly accurately represented by the public comments in that there was a desire to provide kind of age targeted housing, to provide housing for that increasing demographic within the city of Louisville. So um, certainly, I think that was, you know, another component of that desire and, and capture there. Um, you know, from Steph's perspective, um, you know, I think we certainly want to hear from Planning Commission on this, if that's something that needs to be carried forward. I don't think that, I think Steph, just given the increase in density um and the, coupled with the inclusionary housing ordinance, um, the type of product that would be built there, if they maximize that density, would be smaller footprint. And because of the inclusionary housing ordinance, um, you know, they would have the option to either to fee and lieu or provide onsite, but that in and of itself does contribute to um expanded housing options within the city of Louisville. So we're leaning on, you know, just on those two items, but certainly want to hear from Planning Commission on that.
Thank you very much. Additional Commissioner questions of staff at this time? All right, seeing no additional questions at this time. I will now close the public hearing, and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Who would like to share their thoughts at this time? Commissioner Williams?
Um, so I want to hear um my fellow planning commissioners' thoughts on the iterations that we've gone through um and what the plan or the comp plan um states as a vision for this particular um parcel and for um the parcels that front um Highway forty-two and, and obviously I'm talking, I'm speaking about the commercial piece. Just because uh we're coming out of a pandemic and commercial is uh pretty much vacant. A lot of places are vacant. And that would make you think that you should put less uh commercial in a particular parcel, even though, um, I mean, if we look at long term, um, eventually we're going to need that commercial as far as um uh revenue for the town. And, you know, I, I hate to um build something that's mostly residential and, and, you know, forego commercial when ten, twenty years down the line, we might need it um for the town. So I'm wondering what other commissioners are thinking about this. And, and obviously, um, past iterations of the foundry, there was a lot more commercial.
Commissioner Deal.
Yeah, down along those lines. I mean, i- if you go back in time, right, the original vision was seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial. And it looks like what we're down to is five thousand uh would be the maybe fourteen thousand of commercial area to be built, um, down to fourteen. So why is that, right? I mean, certainly it could be argued that's the market, that's, you know, where we are today. You know, I, I'd like to think of it a, a different way is to say i- it's a lot easier to build residential in today's environment than to do commercial. It's just easier, right? So I'm uncomfortable going from seventy-five thousand all the way down to fourteen thousand, um, knowing that even half of it might only be built, or it might be only shell that's vacant. So in general, as a principle, uh, from a land use perspective, it's, it's never comfortable for me to just water down, water down, water down. Oh, okay, the, the property cleared and got developed. I don't think that's what we're here to do. I think we have the comprehensive plan. We have, now we have the new um South Boulder Road Small Area Plan, which I understand is, was, came after the, the latest PUD, which is now lapsed. Um, and no, that's the direct input from our citizens and our, our fellow, fellow citizens. So um, that's kind of where I am. I don't feel comfortable necessarily watering down all these things, especially the, the fifty-five and older requirement. I think the traffic issues could probably be solved. It looked like that same issue was in existence in twenty sixteen. So there's probably a solution there, but, you know, adding all the additional uh residential units was never part of the Dakota Vision, and it's just not, not comfortable for me to just say, okay, we'll, we'll give up.
Yeah, and, you know, as a planning commissioner, we have, you know, quite a few uh things that we have to juggle. Um, sorry, my husband's sneezing in the background, and it's like, be quiet, be quiet. Um, but, I mean, we have to deal with zoning issues and what makes sense on what zone. Our fiduciary, fiduciary responsibility to the town or the um design guidelines that we have to go by, um, following the comp plan vision. I mean, that is huge. Um, and then also, you know, we have to um also do help the neighbors that are the adjacent properties. It's some sort of continuity that uh kind of, you know, uh, steps down to, to um, you know, um, be, you know, uh, what, what do you want to call it? Adjacent land uses. Uh, so that's a part of our responsibility as well. So um, it's a lot to juggle and, and, but it's our responsibility. And I feel that while this development has some things, it's, you know, uh, as far as adjacent land uses, it, it obviously meets that. Um, there's a residential that is um a budding other residential. Um, but I, I feel that the, the frontage road is, is lacking, that we're lacking the um development, commercial development that we originally had in the comp plan. And so i- it pains me um to accept something less, so that that's.
Uh, I guess on a bit of a devil's advocate thought, um, one of my concerns is that we've been through one of the longest periods of economic prosperity in United States history. Uh, and during that time, all of the residential was built. Um, and yet, nobody has been able to pull together a, a commercial um plan for this site. Um, so um, I, I, I guess my concern with where we're headed with retail in Louisville is that we are essentially overbuilt at this point in time. Uh, did, right, I mean, you don't have to look too far around town and to see uh that. So I don't know that holding out is going to ever get it for us, but uh, but I'm, you know, it's just part of the discussion. So, uh, Commissioner Hefner, uh, did you want to?
Yeah, you uh, you took the words right out of my mouth. I, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Chairman. I think, um, you know, I, I don't think there's any way uh us as planning commission can wish into existence commercial development that just isn't supportable in this market. And, and the reality is we have lots of vacant commercial retail space as it is, and building seventy-five thousand square feet more of it, um, it isn't going to address the vacancies we already have. It, it will um, in all likelihood, exacerbate that problem. To me, the, the density issue, this, I, I'm, I'm fairly persuaded the density here is in line with what's around it. Maybe it's a touch higher, maybe it's about the same. Um, but it's, it's not wildly off. It's not twenty surrounded by ten. It's maybe ten surrounded by eight or ten, ten and six, but it's close. Uh, I, I think it's a realistic vision, again, recognizing we're in the, the GDP stage, not the PUD stage, and, uh, you know, consistent with my question of the applicant, I, I think the key thing here is making sure the engagement continues a- and potentially even increases into the PUD stage to make sure that, that, you know, whenever we see the PUD come through, that it's something that's really been thought out with the neighbors and, and you know, we, we don't end up with a three-hour-long public hearing. Not, not that that's what we want to avoid, but just we, that's always a sign that, that something's not right, is the, the volume of public comments. So I, I would hope that the PUD, when we see it, is, is something that folks um are in favor of or can at least live with. On the age restrictions, I, I'll just say I am not a, a big proponent of making rules about what kinds of people can live where. You know, I, a- age is one thing, um, but we obviously have a, a history in this country of doing that with other characteristics, and it, it just makes me a little uncomfortable. I feel uncomfortable with trying to limit renters for the same reason. I think um, well-intentioned as those comments may be, uh, we, we do have a history of, of trying to limit, quote, "those kinds of people" from living in our neighborhoods and, and consistent with the idea of inclusionary housing or inclusionary zoning. I, I don't think we ought to do that. My final issue is one that I, I'd like to hear some discussion on from the commissioners, which is, i- it isn't that often that we get a recommendation of denial in our packet, and I understand that's been changed, but it was changed rather late in the day today. And I, I, I just wonder if we should hold this open for additional public comment based on that or, or make some kind of note to counsel um that that there are folks who may not have come forward with their comments, seeing the recommendation of denial a- and assuming that, given how infrequent that is, we would be unlikely to approve it. So I'd, I'd entertain other thoughts on that if there are any.
Just a, a comment about, um, I know the applicant made um comparisons to the McCaslin Corridor. Um, and certainly some of those big box uh stores might be empty for a while because I think that train has left the station for the most part in terms of big ba- big box retail, except for some, some specialty store exceptions like Costco. But I think there's an opportunity to, to build a commercial center that support, that is supported by uh Steel Ranch and all the other neighboring um neighborhoods. Um, and I, and I think to just give that up and say, we're gonna cave in and, and basically double the number of, of townhomes that are gonna front Highway forty-two, um, it, it's just short sighted. And, and I think it's, you know, one of the reasons, Steve, we've gone through this period of amazing economic prosperity, et cetera. A- again, somebody, one of the, our fellow citizens mentioned the Gallagher Amendment, Amendment and the challenges with commercial real estate and the property tax uh load that they have to carry. And I think that's probably what's driving um a lot of lack of business creation, frankly, from a, a, a commercial standpoint. Um, hopefully that will be changing. Um, but I'd hate to miss the opportunity to see, um, you know, some of that commercial come back. Um, and, and again, I think from a development perspective, it's my sense that it, you know, the financial models work easier for, for townhomes and condos than they do for a commercial. Um, and, and not just because of the, the challenging times we're in, but just because of the, the, the margin involved. Not to mention, obviously, residential is significantly, you know, is a cost center for the city versus commercial uh provides more uh revenue. Uh, you know, the, the modeling, at the end of the day, two million dollars over twenty years is kind of a, a rounding error. Obviously, we don't want it to continue to see it go in the red, which is continues, this, this is deeper in the red than the original PUD. Uh, we'd like to see it turn around, but um, you know, that's not a, a big factor. And Commissioner, or I guess Vice Chair Hefner, um, I, I, it was a little bit of a, this is a surprise and a little jarring to, to have that big change, a significant change. Um, so yeah, some note or, uh, obviously the, the minutes will carry this forward um to the fact that, you know, it was almost like, wow, can, can we even deliberate on this with a, a couple of these moving parts going on?
Do you think we ought to hold the, the public comment open till our next meeting, or do you think we can pass it along with, with just a note? But uh, assuming, assuming we do pass it along, I, I should say.
Right. No, I, I, I'm comfortable knowing that residents will have an opportunity at, at a later uh stage. But um, I think in general, um, I think that this might be something we might want to do a continuance on um if, you know, there's changes that material that late.
Lisa.
Hi, Commission. I just want to kind of maybe ask a few questions, too. I think if there is, you know, it sounds like we've kind of got some mixed opinions here tonight. So I think if there are, you know, clear direction for any changes, I think the applicant, particularly if you're leaning toward a continuance, um, or, you know, either way, maybe conditions of approval. I think the applicant would be interested in hearing, you know, more specific direction around possible changes. Um, not to say, you know, then it, obviously at his discretion to um, you know, amend or not, but um, I think if there's, you know, kind of more specifics, that might be helpful guidance if you're leaning toward a continuance. Just a suggestion, certainly at your discretion. Not sure.
I'll just clarify, well, all I was suggesting is that, given, given the change, we could hold it open for additional public comment, but not, not faulting the applicant, not faulting staff, certainly, just, just sort of a timing issue, but I, others may have a different view.
Well, I think it would be good to um get the um financials from how this has changed. I mean, why you, you went from, you know, deny to approve and, and uh, kind of flush that a little bit better than um. uh, kind of flush that a little bit better than, um, just a quick addendum, you know?
Sure. Yeah. No, I think that's a fair question. And I didn't really talk about the, the differing results of the fiscal analysis, you know? And so really staff viewed that the fiscal analysis, um, would be substantially unchanged from the full build out high scenario in the packet, right? So really, because that would result in one hundred percent construction, um, that would be, that would leave you with the high scenario. And it really kind of removes the option then for the low scenario, um, as it relates to the commercial fiscal. Um, we didn't do an analysis with a low scenario that leaves kind of the lower assumptions for um, construction costs and things like that related to the residential. So part of the low scenario analysis kind of decreases at about eighty percent, some of those, um, inputs related to residential. Um, but we left, you know, the, the commercials the same. And so that's really why, because of the guarantee for concurrency, you know, it brought that fiscal analysis, um, you know, albeit very slightly, you know, into that positive column based on assumptions. And I also just want to clarify a little bit more of those assumptions. So, you know, within that, uh, we have to make assumptions based on mixes of uses. And so staff put in basically a third office, which is non-sales tax generating, a third service, again, non-sales tax generating, and a third restaurant or retail. And so within that high scenario even, you know, really only a third of that is sales tax generating. And so, um, we felt like that was on the conservative side. So I think that, you know, there is some, and again, we have to make assumptions and kind of a point in time. And so just to be clear, you know, the fiscal doesn't model, you know, certainly if that were all retail, that that number would go up. But we try and model what we think is probably a realistic scenario, given similar types of uses and similar sizes of buildings within that corridor. Um, but absolutely, I think if the commission is wanting more analysis around kind of the fiscal change or different scenarios, you know, so I think that's something we could continue to model and come back to you with. Okay, you know, if, um, you know, different time points and things like that. So, and again, the fiscal model is really, you know, it's, it's not necessarily a predictor of all the outcomes. All of the inputs are all assumptions, right? So it's all assumption, sales price, number of people in units, things like that. But if you have different scenarios you want us to model, if we do continue, happy to, um, if you are able to kind of share some guidance around that, we're happy to provide those.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa. Um, so just again, with the commissioners here, um, I'm kind of sensing that perhaps we would like additional evaluation or, or?
Joe Brown, I said, I don't, I don't personally need additional fiscal analysis. As I had mentioned, it's not a huge driver of, of, of how I, you know, we'll, we'll vote, you know? I'm looking at the, the comprehensive plan, the small area plan, and then kind of what was envisioned for this development. Um, is kind of the anchor points of, um, you know, how, how about, I guess one of the questions is kind of which way are you leaning? Cause it sounds like Commissioner Williams, Vice Chair Hoffner fairly comfortable in terms of where they will vote, I think.
Right. Um, and I'm torn. Um, uh, as much as I would like to believe and wish that there was a strong future for retail on the site, um, I just haven't seen it. Um, as far as the density goes, right, the typical argument against density would be traffic. Uh, but in this case, the residential density actually reduces the traffic from what it would otherwise be in a commercial build out scenario. Um, so, um, on the density issue, I'm also feeling pretty comfortable with the, the project as proposed. It, it is, it is also a good location for density, right, for, um, traffic patterns and, and people who need to get places. Um, so I, I, and I guess too, again, here I look at, uh, the King Supers, uh, you know, the, the whole, the entire shopping center over there, and it has not had full occupancy with the possible exception of, no, it's not had full occupancy. Uh, I, I.
You're talking about that shopping mall?
Yeah, in, in the extended area around King Supers there, no, ever. Uh, at one, one in time.
I, I'm sure the vision, um, originally for Dakota was, you know, maybe something a little bit beyond, you know, much more pedestrian friendly, walkable, um, restaurant options, even, you know, anchor, um, restaurant option, um, versus, you know, kind of a re- replay of, of the King Supers area. Um, I, I did not realize going into tonight, obviously, that the, the small area plan was created after the GDP for Dakota. Um, obviously, the PUD was the governing document for the, the height, but the, the multiple buildings of, um, thirteen, uh, townhomes in block five and then twelve more in block four at two stories fronting Highway forty-two. Um, that, that's a pretty significant change in terms of the view shed. Uh, you know, it's a bit of a townhome canyon in a way, driving down through there, uh, which is a concern. You know, I had envisioned that that would be retail, single story, obviously going to third story in that, that next row, um, with, you know, the, the amenities in the commercial that, you know, are available to all the residents there and then obviously to the rest of the town. So, um, but I know, you know, the GDP is what it is with the, you know, thirty-five foot height, I believe, which is now contradicted by the small area plan.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask if you have a view on the, on whether we should allow additional public comment on the sort of change staff approval based on the financial modeling, uh, you know? I- in some ways, and it's a small change, but in other ways, it, it seems to me to be a, a fairly significant change that, folks might want to have input into at this stage.
So you're, you would, if we went that direction, you'd be proposing a continuance to allow for additional public comment based on the late in the day release of this switch from the denial to approval recommendation?
Yeah, and, and, you know, no, no additional presentations from, from the applicant or from staff, um, in all likelihood, just, uh, just additional time for the public to come speak to us or to submit written comments. And maybe we wouldn't get any, but, um, i- in my mind, that would sort of be the, the most conservative course here, given the amount of interest we've had in this. Um, I, I would just hate to have it feel like things got changed at the eleventh hour.
Hmm. Um, um, that, that I probably appreciate that, uh, as a potential approach. Um, I'm curious if Commissioners Williams or Deal, uh, have any thoughts on that one?
I mean, my, from my perspective, the fiscal model, it doesn't sound like it changed materially from what was presented in the staff report. At least you can correct me if I'm wrong. And, you know, relatedly, as I had mentioned before, the, the findings of the fiscal model don't, you know, are not a huge factor in, in my decisioning. Um, so I, I don't, I think it, it could just delay a, a decision and slow down the process for the applicant.
Commissioner Williams, you have any thoughts on?
Um, I'm kind of torn. I mean, I see the real reason, um, in, uh, continuing this is just to, to, to provide the public more um, opportunity for comment, not necessarily for us to deliver um, anything different, cause it doesn't sound like anyone's gonna change their opinion, um, of their, um, direction. Um, but I, I can see that, you know, public comment, uh, would be important to be able to, um, allow that to happen. So.
Um, s- so you, you would be leaning in favor of a potential continuance?
In order for the public to have more comment, yes. Not necessarily to, um, you know, provide.
I- 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 if so, but we've had a, a large number of emails, um, that we've uh, seen. And then we've also had a handful of people provide public comment this evening.
Um, but the, I mean, there could be more people that would comment based on the fact that it, the staff is approving, you know, recommends approval. So that, that's my only concern to deny that. Um, I would be a little concerned, um, that we didn't give the, the public due process.
Okay. Lisa, I, uh.
Sure. So I think, you know, you, you have discretion here, certainly, you know, the, the la- the la- the late minute, you know, the last minute change. We just wanted to get that in your hands, you know, basically as soon as it was available for you to kind of consider. But I, I agree, it's, um, kind of not customary to, for the applicant to kind of change the application that late in the game. So, um, I think it's certainly at your discretion. If you are concerned that the public doesn't have adequate time to weigh in, then we could talk a continuance. Um, you know, as you know, though, this still will be moving forward to city council. Um, so you are a recommending body and the city council will have the, um, you know, actually they'll have a couple kinds of public comment, just given the fact that this will be an ordinance for them. So I don't know if Directors of Care wants to weigh in on this. I think if there's, you know, kind of a, a legal um, implication potentially for the validity of the decision from planning commission, I certainly wouldn't want to get sideways, um, from that perspective. Um, and then also I'm, I'm not sure if the applicant, um, wants to chime in at all, if, you know, he wants to respond potentially any changes to, you know, if we are going toward a continuance, if there is direction, you know, that you'd like to give him on any potential changes, if any, if there are any, um, that he could amend, then we could get that embedded within the next, um, staff report based on your direction.
Um, so I, I do see this kind of as a question of process. Um, I, I would welcome commissioners to provide any thoughts if they had on that. But, uh, Directors of Care, a- a- as far as the last minute nature of this uh, kind of change and, and reversal from, uh, the city, uh, on moving from denial to recommendation.
Sure. So I think if you, you know, if you look at the staff report, the, as we were analyzing against comprehensive plan policy, the only thing that we saw that wasn't compliant was the fiscal policy, which is an important policy. And so that was the genesis of our original recommendation. So the applicant did respond to that with an alternative proposal. Um, and I think that's what's important. I think, um, I do agree with Lisa, it's probably at your discretion to, um, continue. And there's lots of good reasons to continue. You've mentioned a lot of them. Um, I think it's important that if you continue to get more public comment, that that hopefully is meaningful in your deliberation. So I would just recommend that if you ask for more public comment, um, that you're open to hearing that and, you know, um, that wade into your final recommendation. Um, I think from a process standpoint, I don't think, I think you can, um, continue it with the intent to take more public comment. Um, if you feel like that's important to your final recommendation. Um, you can also, the, the other issue here, I think, is making a motion. So if you want to try to finalize this with the recommendation, you have two resolutions before you. You have a resolution of approval, you have a resolution of denial, you can adopt one of those with, um, amendments to either of those. If you can get to that point, um, you do need a vote of three out of the four to adopt either of those. I'm not sure if that's a possibility to deny either. So it may also be worth continuing the meeting to get more information. Um, and even potentially have additional commissioners uh, participate in the hearing if that's necessary to continue this on to city council.
Yeah. And with that, I, I, I'm sensing that perhaps we should, um, move for a continuance, uh, that, um, just out of process, uh, for this reasons, for these reasons. Um, and just curious if the other commissioners are, uh, how you're feeling about that as possibility? A- a- and again, to Directors of Care's point of being certain that we are open to that public comment, that, that public comment could sway our view on, on the whole thing, I guess.
Uh, I'll address that briefly, which is I, I thought we got a lot of great comments this go round, and they were helpful to me. And I would hope that we, I would be hopeful that by continuing it, we may receive similar high quality comments that, that help us.
Thank you. Commissioners Deal or Williams, I, 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 I don't think, well, we necessarily are you have enough people to do anything tonight, actually. Um,
Yeah, I mean, a- as I've mentioned, a, a continuance. Now, if, if there's a, a perception or a reality that, that citizens are not coming to comment because they saw the staff denial, um, I don't know that that would be the case. I think if folks are interested, they're gonna, they're gonna dial in either way. Um, but maybe the perspective is because they saw that denial, they're like, well, I don't need to take time out of my night. Um, okay. To me, to me, I, I'm less in favor of a continuance. I think it just extends. But I don't know that we're gonna get out of time, uh, two to two vote anyway. I'm not sure, Steve.
Right. I would agree with you on that. Um, well, uh, with that then, I, go ahead.
From a process standpoint, what happens with a, a two to two?
Well, I was just scrolling through your bylaws, but basically a two-two motion does not pass, right? So if you've moved to approve and that won't pass, and then you move to deny and that won't pass. So, I mean, at some point, um, you know, we could take all of that to city council, but you basically don't have a recommendation on the books. So, um, I don't know, I guess Director, if we can, how would we advance that?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I would say I don't. There's never a good answer to that issue of, um, and you know, that's why we often have an odd number of members and we run into these issues where you have these even tight, and you never get the, you know, the majority that you need. Um, I, I would, uh, to be honest, I would need to consult with the city attorney on if we can move a two-two vote forward to city council. I honestly don't know right now. Um, I think there, I think my recommendation at this point is a continuance. Um, I think there's been some good reasons for a continuance articulated. Um, you know, one being that maybe everybody didn't participate because of the packet that was published. Um, there is new substantive information. Um, I think staff could do additional fiscal analysis. Um, and the, the last reason I would mention is that there could be more additional commission members. And as you know, a commission member can view this hearing and then participate in the future hearing once they've reviewed all of the material, including watching this video recording. Um, so then, you know, they would be fully informed and then we would be able to have a vote. So, so while it's, so I think for all of those reasons, I would recommend a continuance. But again, any of you can make a motion at any time for a continuance at this point. You could recommend approval or denial of the resolution, and you can take a vote and see where it lands. The kind of your options right now.
Yeah. You could take a vote, you could get the two-two votes both ways, and at that point do a continuance, you know? So I mean, if you really feel like you want to go on the record.
I, I think at this point, I, I, I would, uh, entertain a motion to continue. Um,
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you such a motion to, uh, continue consideration of this matter, um, and keep it open for additional public comments at our next scheduled meeting.
So we should talk about schedule real quick. Sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner Hefner. The, um, applicants and, and Mr. Bear, feel free to chime in here as we're talking schedule with your availability, but he's not available, is my understanding on the next regular meeting. So we would need to talk further dates. Um, so I know we had reached out to you, um, a couple of options. We'd reached out to you all to talk, uh, potential overflow and the, the overflow night that works best for the group was July fifteenth. Um, if not, we would be looking at the next regular scheduled meeting in August.
I, I think actually I'd like to move ahead with the motion, uh, as it stands. And then we can discuss dates in the afternoon. I don't want the dates to actually cloud the motion at hand.
You got it.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Um, can we go ahead with a roll call vote, please? So the motion is to continue to a future meeting. Yeah, Lisa?
So we have to, within that vote, we have to include the date certain. So in order to do it.
All right, you had mentioned that, sorry about that.
Because of the, um,
Thank you.
Notice requirement, the date needs to be included with that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, right. So you had indicated in previous.
August twelfth would be the next regular August meeting or July fifteenth potentially. So I know that we don't have everyone in attendance tonight, so we haven't conferred on anyone's August schedule. But let's see.
Hey, Lisa.
Yep.
I can, I can do the 15th if that, I couldn't do the prior week.
So the applicant would be available on July 15th? Let me, I'm trying to check the, the responses from you all. And Amelia, if you find that faster, no, I just found it, okay?
Yeah, so I think it's just Steve who's a note for that day.
Okay, so just the chair. So at that point, we would have an odd number. So we would potentially have, you know, five members in attendance on July 15th.
I'm sorry, I, I sent the wrong, I sent the wrong information to you and I'm not gonna be able to make July 15th, sorry.
Okay. Well, the safest bet might be just the August meeting is I don't want to try and, I mean, we, we don't have Commissioner Howe here tonight. We, you know, don't have Commissioner Moline here tonight, so I don't want to presume their schedules on those. And I, I believe Commissioner Moline is never available on the fourth Thursday due to some of his other obligations. So August 12th, continuing to the next regular meeting in August is probably the most predictable. And Chair Brown, I understand we may or, may or may not have you that night, we don't know on your schedule yet.
Right.
Okay.
Certainly helpful though. I, I see, Mr. Bear, you had your hand raised, was it just concerning the, the dates issue here, please?
Yeah. Yes. Sorry, I left it on.
Okay, 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 great, thanks.
Operator here.
No problem there. So the August 12th meeting?
Yeah, let me just make sure that's the right date, looking at my calendar, that is the second Thursday. So August 12th would be the regularly scheduled August meeting. So yeah, if you would include in your motion then to continue to August 12th.
And, and what is the, the next meeting after that?
So our next regularly scheduled meeting would be, the one we can count on would be September 9th. So just as far, just so you know, the overflow dates, we tend to coordinate a little bit ahead of time just to make sure of planning commissioner availability, since it's not the regular meeting. Our regular scheduled meeting is the second Thursday of every month. So this is August 12th, is that a conflict for you?
I might have a conflict that I can.
You know, another option we can do is renotice. So it may be that we need to, so this, I'm just going to throw that out there is we table the item, staff renotices the application once we've had a chance to coordinate offline with the full commission as well as the applicant on potential dates. So, Mr. Bear, I don't know if you'd prefer to go that route, it might get you in a little sooner if August 12th is a problem.
Well, you know, I would also recommend we can continue to August 12th and then.
True, we could do another.
Doesn't work out for Mr. Bear, we can just put on the agenda that it was tabled and then we can renotice it.
Like that. And I, and I suggest we do just that, but for July 15th and then we'll all, we can all check on July 15th, I, you know.
How about we continue to July 8th? Because July 15th, we may not need a meeting. So I like that idea, Commissioner Heffner, let's continue to July 8th. Brian, that will result then either in another continuance based on a date we all know and you don't need to be there for that, or then if we don't have a date coordinated, we would renotice. Sorry, Directors of Care.
I didn't quite understand that because Mr. Bear can't be there on the 8th.
So if we continue to the 8th, then we can confirm either another continuance date, right? Commissioner Howe or Heffner, is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, either, either the 8th will work or, or it turns out it won't work and we'll just, we'll continue it again now.
So the 8th won't work, so I guess we would continue to the 15th, the 8th won't work for the applicant.
So what, let's shoot for the 15th then, and then, you know, it sounds like maybe we have some quorum issues, but maybe we don't.
That's up to the commission, I mean, staff's fine continuing to the 15th, we've heard. We just won't have, let's see, Amelia, can you confirm? I think we'd have.
So we're gonna have four members on the 15th.
Yeah, I think we'd be.
So we will have a quorum on the 15th, we can hear it, there's the potential that there could be another two-two tie, but we would have a quorum and we absolutely could do it on the 15th. I think, Mr., and so that's up to the commission. And the benefit of going to August is that if Mr. Bear can attend, we'll probably have a larger number of commission members available for the hearing. Does that make sense? Of why we, we, we could do the 15th technically, but we were just concerned about the, the only four commissioners attending.
I think.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion for August 12th?
Yes, I certainly would. Thank you.
Mr. Bear, are you available that night? Do we know ahead, do we know now is a problem?
He said it was a potential problem.
Potential problem, we can, okay.
Yeah, I'll, uh, let's, let's do that, I'll, I'll, I'll make it happen.
We could always continue past the 12th or just take, you know, table it and renotice it for a different date as well. So we've got options, but I think that makes sense.
All right, then we have a motion on the, on the table. And a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes, we look forward to revisiting this in August. Thank you very much for your input and your presentation this evening. And, and I guess too, I would also note that we certainly appreciate that you were working with staff to make these changes. And it is unfortunate that it was so late in, in the day today on those. So I would look forward to being able to see if people do have additional thoughts or comments. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Oh, all right then. Moving on to our next item is a request to continue the 769 CTC Boulevard, PUD in Platt to July 8th, 2021. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you for the second roll call, please.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Heffner?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes, thank you. Any planning commission comments at this time?
I, I do actually have a couple of them, I'll keep them brief. One is depending on which subset of us attends the hearing on August 12th, we should, and I'm hoping, Lisa, you can help us remind commissioners who weren't here tonight that they ought to watch the video.
Certainly.
I will let you be the bearer of that news.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely, we always let folks know, that's an expectation.
And my only other comment, and I don't necessarily think we need to do anything about this, but I thought the points raised about live work being somewhat difficult because it's a little, maybe a little rigid with respect to the percentages. I thought that was an interesting comment. And also the, the comment we heard about residential in downtown being only by special review use was interesting. Again, I'm not sure that we need to deal with any of those right now, but I, I just did want to flag those. They, they struck me as sort of interesting points that we might want to consider in the future.
Thank you. Seeing no additional commissioner comments, we'd open up for staff comments.
Um, I have nothing further for you. So I think at this time, we can assume we will not have an overflow July meeting. On the 8th, you will consider the Avid mural, the St. Louis Parish filing two and 769 CTC Boulevard. So I think we are about through with our backlog, we'll continue this meeting from August 12th. And then after that, you may get a little bit of a break. So our, certainly our caseload will, will not be as intense as it's been over the last few months.
Thank you very much and appreciate everybody's late night work again here, sorry it's gotten so late. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, I'll move to adjourn, thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.